Yeah, which I thought was fascinating. And they were younger. Yeah. So I have to get the story. Exactly. I have to look at it. Okay. I'm trying to keep things.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome back. We had opened our meeting earlier, went into executive session. We will start by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could please rise and join me, that would be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is public announcements and comments. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board? Hey Kurt?
I wanted to clarify the question about the demolition of Matiche's from last week. The first reason we carry a number for demolition is if you build a school in the same property, then the state participates in the demolition of the old school. And the second reason we've kept the number is so that the town does decide to demolish the school, it's not a surprise when we start talking about whatever the cost would be to demolish it.
We did get clarification in email on that today, Kurt, as a follow-up from that, that it was asked to be in and it was asked to be shown, so we have the ability to make the determination.
Yeah, so if you don't demolish the school, you don't have to borrow it, you don't have to use it. It's just, it's there if.
You know, I think, Kurt, within our committee, we were constantly exchanging questions and answers about the demolition as we looked through the different alternatives, and it was because of the confusion it created, not having a number, we elected to at least show it so that we saw the same information for every proposal on one sheet of paper.
Right. It's making an assumption that the towns won't reuse the buildings, because the same thing is happening with Wixson, there's a number on the Wixson school to take that down if the town's attorney, Dennis decides they don't want to keep Wixson. But again, if you just reuse it, sell it, do something else with it, that money doesn't mean anything, it doesn't have to be borrowed, it doesn't cost us anything, it's just there so that we know what it is if we need it. That's the reason why it's there.
Thank you.
And I want to say this last week, and hopefully we won't have to deal with this issue again this, at least this year, but if you notice a couple of times in these storms, the traffic lights went out, and people just drive through them anyways, but I asked my legal experts, otherwise known as Peter and Frank, and they told me that the law is if you come to a traffic, a signal traffic intersection, lights aren't working, it becomes a four-way stop sign, stop intersection, so if that happens again, stop. And, you know, maybe a suggestion, I know it's tough on DPW when these things are happening, but maybe put together some temporary stop signs that could be placed at those intersections while the power was out, because that happened twice at White's Path and Station Avenue, and I think at the other end of Station Avenue, it happened on one of the storms, so.
Dennis did that. Dennis put some signs out there.
Right. I saw him in Dennis. So maybe, I'm going to call Steve and see if he, you know, through his email and Facebooks, maybe he could start putting some of these things out there, like the move over law and the, you know, the status of an intersection like that when the power was out. Do a little more education on those things.
Good idea. Thanks, Kurt. So anybody else would like to address the board? Okay. But seeing nobody, we're going to go to our 6:10 hearing. I'll turn it over to our licensing chairman.
Thank you, Ben, Chairman. Matter we have on today, tonight, is the license for James A., is it Leatus, Inc., doing business as Black Sheep, Black Sheep Bar and Grill. People want to come forward on that matter? Sure. Mr. Lett, you want to introduce the people with you, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stone. This is James Leatus.
Sir, if you could speak into the mic, that would be helpful. Nobody at home can hear you stand.
This is James Leatus, the license holder of the Black Sheep. Charles Weatherby, the manager. David Kelly, who is a bartender, also working tonight in question.
Okay, very good. I'm going to read the notice into the record, but before I do that, anyone who's going to give any testimony in this case, please stand. We have, it has to be given under, we have to be sworn in. Has to be testimony under oath. All of you swear that the testimony given this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I pledge allegiance.
Okay. With the record deflected, all the witnesses have been sworn. Town of Yarmouth Board of Selectmen Alcohol License Show Cause Hearing. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has scheduled a show cause hearing to determine if the annual all alcoholic commed v. license held by James A. Leatus, Inc., doing business as Black Sheep Bar and Grill located at 720 Route 6A Yarmouth Port, Charles Weatherby manager, should be modified, suspended, or revoked under Chapter 138, Section 34(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws in Section 1.07 Subsection E, 1.09 Subsection A, and 1.01 Subsections A and C of the Yarmouth Code Rules and Regulations of the Yarmouth Licensing Authority. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 27, 2018, in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The board meeting begins at 6 o'clock. First of all, Mr. Lett, do you have the letter that was written to me by, no, that's the notice, excuse me, by Officer Magnussen?
Yes, I do.
That recites the basic facts from the police's point of view, dated February 15, 2018. Okay, so that's what I'm pretty much going by, that's all I have in front of me.
I don't think I actually swore myself in, but if I'm not testimonying, I'll probably be speaking for us.
You don't need to be sworn.
Did you say February 15th, Mike?
Right. Yeah. Just one year.
We don't have that in our packet. We have the one dated March 1st.
March 1st, I have. Actually, I don't have.
You don't have the February 15th letter?
This one to...
This was a letter from Officer Magnussen to me?
To you, and then the March 1st.
I figured it was in the packet.
Yeah, the first, March 1st letter is to the...
I have the March 1st one. That's it. That's okay.
Yeah, the March letter was the letter that went out from the town administrator.
Okay, I do have that.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't have it in mind, but.
Are there any facts that are agreed to in that letter, or is everything pretty much contested?
Yes, Mr. Stone, we do agree to numbers three and four. Now, we are in violation of those two sections. I believe it's 1.09A and 1.01A and C.
Okay.
We do not contest those at all.
All right. So the issue is one and two, whether or not an illegality occurred on the premises to wit minor in possession of alcohol and a violation of our local rules saying that licensees are responsible for ensuring minors are not drinking alcoholic beverages on the premises. Those two things are contested?
Yes, Mr. Stone.
Okay. Officer Magnussen, would you like to make a presentation, or would you like me to question the officers?
I think I'd like to call all the witnesses. First, as a preliminary matter, I'd ask if we can agree to refer the young man involved as the employee. There is a pending criminal case, and I don't want to contaminate the jury with a new story. So if that's okay.
Okay.
Deploy, yes, sir.
I'd ask Officer Mary Gibney.
Good evening.
My name's Officer Mary Gibney, of the Yarmouth Police Department. I've been officer for 11 years here. On the evening of January, Wednesday, January 24, 2018, at approximately 9:00 PM, correction, 9:18 PM, I was traveling on Sutucket Road in Yarmouth Port towards Route 6A westbound. I observed a vehicle traveling towards me at a very high rate of speed, and I confirmed the speed of that vehicle at 58 miles per hour. Sutucket Road is a posted 30 mile power zone. I turned around and went after the vehicle, also observing that the vehicle crossed over marked lanes prior to being able to stop the vehicle. Upon stopping the vehicle, I identified the operator, and as we already agreed to, referred to him as the employee, which I determined in our conversations during the traffic stop. I advised him the reason for the stop, and he said he had just left work, and he was going to pick up his girlfriend. When I spoke to him again in regards to the speed of his, of traveling, which was in excess of route, of the posted speed limit on Route 6, he changed his story stating that he was going to see his girlfriend, he was upset because she had been cheating on him. In further conversation, I noted that there was an odor of alcoholic beverage emanating from the vehicle, and he was the only person in the vehicle, this despite some cigarette smoke. I could also determine that he had a thick tongue, an indicator of drinking alcohol, and his eyes were glassy. When I asked him if he had been drinking, he denied drinking on a few occasions. Ultimately, when I pulled it, pointed out some inconsistencies in his story, he admitted to drinking three shots. When I asked him where he had those shots, he stated, he stated that he had them at the Black Sheep Bar and Grill. At that point, I returned to my cruiser, I requested a backup, and ultimately, and then began giving him some field sobriety tests, which included the horizontal gaze and stagnum, the walk and turn, one-legged stand and alphabet, all of which he failed. During those tests, I noted further observations indicating that he was intoxicated and impaired by alcohol, and ultimately placed him under arrest. While transporting back to the station, he began to speak on his own accord without asking any questions, and then began saying that his boss at the Black Sheep Bar and Grill had just been feeding him shots, and his boss had stated that it was okay. I asked him how old he was, and he stated he was 20 years old, and at that point, I told him that he should remain silent and continue the transport to the police station. He didn't say anything after that. At the police station, I made some more observations in regards to his intoxication. There was a smell of alcohol in my cruiser that wasn't there prior to him being placed in the cruiser, some of the answers that he gave in booking, and ultimately, he took a breathalyzer test during which time you provide two samples, and recorded a .144 and a .142 blood alcohol content. In Massachusetts, you are presumed to be intoxicated at a .08% blood alcohol content. That's essentially the facts of what occurred.
Okay. Do you, Mr. Lett, have any questions for the officer?
Yes, I do, Mr. Stone, if I may, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Officer Gibney. Officer Gibney, this took place on January 24 of this past week.
Sir, you have to, you have to use the microphone, because people at home cannot hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll set it down.
That's fine.
This took place on January 24, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you did write a police report on this incident, isn't that true?
Yes, I did.
And you went to the police academy, is that correct?
Yes.
You were trained in OUIRS?
Yes.
Okay, and you were trained how to write police reports in the OUIRS?
Yes.
And you also trained to put everything of a relevant nature in that police report regarding the OUIRS, is that also true?
Yes.
Okay. And in fact, you did write a report on this?
Yes.
And how soon after that incident did you write this report?
That night.
Okay, so it's pretty fresh in your mind at that time?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you did also say that the employee stated to you that he had three shots at the Black Sheep Bar and Grill, is that correct?
Correct.
And you did, in fact, put that in your police report, isn't that also true?
Yes.
Okay. But you also testified that his boss had been feeding him shot after shot at the Black Sheep Bar and Grill, is that also true?
He said he'd been feeding him shots, yes.
And in fact, did you state that anywhere in your police report, that his boss had been feeding him shot after shot?
Yes, I should, I believe it's going to be in...
Did your memory exhausted us, or was it in your report?
I believe it's in the last page of the report. I could double-check by looking at the report.
Okay. So your report, hope it's fresh, you have it right there?
Sure. Yes, I do. The third paragraph, last page, numbered, numbered page three on the narrative.
I'm sorry, I don't have a page three. Sorry.
You can take a look at it if you'd like.
Yeah, fine. Okay, thank you. Aware of that page three, I did not have a copy of that, but thank you for that. And did he also tell you he was drinking, was it, was it gin?
I don't recall that he told me what it was that he was drinking.
No recall? Did, did he tell you he had a pint? Is that what he told you?
Yes, but that was in reference to the previous night. I had asked him how much sleep as part of the interaction to determine his alcohol intoxication. I asked him how much sleep he had had last night, and he began to recount that previous evening, not that night.
He just told you he had a pint, that's what your report says, is that correct?
Correct, for the previous evening, not on this, the night of the arrest.
Does it say that in the report?
I wrote the report, the question is in regards to the last night's sleep, and then he...
Right, and then he said...
And then he recounted his evening.
So he just said, "I drank a pint," and that's...
He began talking about his, what he had done that evening, and closed it out with, "I drank a pint." He never answered the question of how much sleep he had had. And I posed that question a second time to him, which, that's it, when he answered eight or nine hours, I believe he said.
Just a minute, please. I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay. Officer Magnussen, you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. I, I have a couple. Now, Officer, when he talked about drinking a pint, is it, you're, I'm confused a little bit about that, did he say that was the night before that he had a pint?
That was the previous night. I had asked him, "How much sleep did you have last night?" And he answered by recounting his activities that previous evening leading up to that night of where he would have slept, and said he, and he finished with, "I drank a pint." He didn't answer the ultimate, the question, which was, "How much sleep?" His answer of drinking the pint was in regards to the previous evening, not the night of the arrest.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions to the officer?
The only question I have is, did you ask how long ago he had left?
In the initial interaction with him, when I approached him and advised him about his speed, he had, in his words, he said he had just left work and was going to pick up his girlfriend, so I did not specifically ask of when the last drink was. I assumed it was in very close proximity to the time that he left there.
May I ask a follow-up on that question?
Sure.
Okay. Officer Gibney, did you write this police report here?
No, that is filled out by the sergeant, the booking sergeant. I was present during it.
And are you aware that when he was asked when he left work, he said 8:30 PM?
If that's what, yeah, I wouldn't recall that without looking at it. I see that's what was written down, 8:30 PM.
Okay. He said he left work at 8:30 PM?
Yes.
And this took place at, the stop was 9:18, is that correct?
Correct.
So about 48 minutes later?
Yes.
What was the time he said he left?
He said he left at 8:30.
And what time was the stop?
9:18.
Okay. Eric, you had a question?
Just to summarize, the points that are relevant to us here is, number one, he admitted to being underage, and number two, he admitted to drinking at the establishment. Are those both true statements?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I could just clarify, Mr. Stone. The form that Mr. Lett showed you, can you tell us what that form is?
They, it's a, I don't recall the actual title of it. It's a series of questions that we ask the person during booking in order to gauge, to help assist in gauge whether or not the alcohol that they've had. The particular question that he asked in regards to when he, when the 8:30 timeframe is also followed immediately up by a question of, "What time do you think it is now?" At which, and the answer to that question that he made was 9:00 PM. Now, the stop occurred at 9:18, and by the time this was taken, I believe it was about 10:03, and just about nine minutes prior to that, so the actual time was 10:0, I think it was 10:03, it was sometime just after 10:00. He answered it was 9:00, and just nine minutes prior to that, he had been told actually what time it was as part of signing a, another form, and he, he asked what time it was, he was told what time it was, wrote the 10, I believe it was 10:03, 10:03 time. Nine minutes later, he's asked again, "What time is it, what time do you think it is?" And he says 9:00, even though he had just been told. I would say that the 8:30 time on that particular form there is just a, is a guess on his part. He had no idea what time it was when he was in booking, even though he was just told what time it was several minutes before that.
And in your experience, in your 11 years as a police officer, what effect does alcohol have on some individuals' perception of time?
It tends to slow it down, which would make sense that he answered the time much earlier than the actual time it was.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other witnesses?
Yes, it would be Officer Windberg.
Thank you, Officer.
Officer Windberg, on the 26th of January, did you have occasion to go to the Black Sheep Bar and Grill?
I did.
And what was the purpose of that visit?
I went to do a follow-up compliance check regarding their alcohol license.
Okay. Would you describe what took place there, please?
On that particular day, I met Mr. Weatherby and told him the reason why I was at the establishment to conduct a compliance check. At that time, I went through a list that we use at the police department, and on the list is checking for a list of employees where their dates of hire, the county AMITH rules and regulations, each employee should sign off and date it, as well as tip certifications for waitstaff or bartenders.
And what did you find with respect to the AMITH rules and regulations and the employee sign off?
They didn't have it at that point in time. Mr. Weatherby thought that maybe Mr. Leatis had it. He was out on vacation, so he couldn't produce it at that time.
And what did you learn regarding the tip certification of the employees who were on duty on the night of the 24th?
I learned that nobody had tip certification.
Did you recall those employees were?
I do. And Amanda Allen, she was waitressing. David Kelly was bartending.
And neither one of them was tip certified?
They were not.
Okay. Did you have a conversation with Mr. Weatherby about what Mr. Kelly had told him about what had happened with that individual?
Yes, he stated that the employee must have snuck behind the bar and took fireball shots.
And that was something that came from Mr. Kelly to Mr. Weatherby?
Yes.
Okay. And what did Mr. Weatherby tell you about the employee's employment history?
He said that he was a thief, that he caught him stealing before.
And did you subsequently meet with Mr. Kelly at the police station?
I did.
And can you tell us what date expired that?
I asked Mr. Kelly if he was tip certified. He stated no, that it had expired. He stated that he was supposed to be tip certified or go to a training class during the summer, however, he couldn't go because he was working.
And what did Mr. Kelly tell you about the employee in question?
He stated that sometimes he goes behind the bar and helps with the glasses and the trash.
And did he also say that the bar was busy that night?
Yes.
Okay. Now, moving on to a later conversation you had with Mr. Leatis and Mr. Weatherby, where did that take place?
At the restaurant, the bar.
And did you talk to Mr. Leatis about his tip certification?
I did.
And what did he tell you?
He stated that he was not tip certified either, that he had been tip certified for about 20 years, but it had expired a couple of years ago.
And did you later interview Amanda Allen?
I did.
And what was her position on the night of the 24th?
Waitress.
And what did she tell you about her certification?
She stated that she was not tip certified either.
How long has she been working there?
I'd have to refresh my memory, but she had worked there a few years back, and recently, I want to say within three or four months, got rehired. And at that time, when she worked there, her, three years ago, say, she was never tip certified. And when she got rehired or came back to work, she was never asked about being tip certified.
Thank you.
So just briefly, are you aware of any actions that the owner or manager of Black Sheep took regarding the certification after you spoke with them?
I spoke with Officer Magnuson, and he stated that they did get, some of the employees did get tip certified.
Some or all?
I'm not 100% sure. I know that there was talk that some of the employees got tip certified. I think immediately, within days, I believe.
Were you aware that they actually closed down that night voluntarily, when they found out, when they were closed?
Okay.
I'm asking you, did you-
I believe Officer Magnuson did say something about that, but I wouldn't have, Officer Magnuson and I spoke yesterday briefly, and he mentioned it, but I wasn't aware of it, no.
Are you aware of whether or not they didn't reopen until they all got re-certified after that?
I was not, no.
Are you aware of that?
Does anyone have a question of Officer Windberg on the board? Okay. You have any questions of her?
I would like to testify.
Yeah, I figured you'd talk about the mitigation issue next, okay. Officer, thank you. You were sworn in, Officer Magnuson.
Yes, I was.
Mr. Leatis came to see me to talk about the situation, I believe it was February 2nd. And he outlined some very effective remediation actions that they had taken to address the training situation. As was mentioned before, they actually closed one night because they didn't have tip certified staff to work. And I'm a little cloudy whether it was the 27th or the 28th, but it was one of those days, I believe, that they actually closed. On the 28th, they got tip certification from Mr. Leatis and two or three other employees, and he brought me certificates for all of the employees. I don't think I have Amanda Allen, and I'm not sure where we left that, but I have all of the other certificates. I also understand that they have obtained a copy of the rules and regulations, and perhaps they can tell us if they've had the attorneys, the employees sign off. Under our criteria, remedial measures are very important, and that these are commendable. They don't eliminate the violation, but this is a kind of effective action that we want to see taken when there is a violation.
Okay. Mr. Letton?
I have no questions, thank you.
You on the board? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Let, you want to call anyone?
Yes, I would, please. I'd like to call Charles Weatherby, please. Good evening, Mr. Weatherby, could you say your name, please?
Charles B. Weatherby.
And Mr. Weatherby, what is your position at the Black Sheep Bar?
I am the general manager of James A. Leatis Incorporated, and I am the chef of the Black Sheep Bar and Grill.
And do you recall dating back to January 24th that evening?
That's the evening of question when he was stopped?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay. And were you working that evening?
Yes, I was.
And was the employee working that evening?
Yes, he was.
And what type of work did the employee do?
He was a regular line cook.
Okay. Did he do a good job or not?
He was a very good line cook.
And-
For a young guy, very good.
Did you have any interaction with him that evening?
I did. I let him go early because it was slow. So he was packaging up, closing down, did his share about 8:00.
Okay. And while he was working, did you notice anything unusual about him while he was working?
Just his up and down, that he's a very boisterous and moving type of person, but other than that, no, nothing that would draw my attention to him.
Did you have any issues with him prior to that evening?
Yes.
And what were they?
I had issues of a little bit of food disappearing from the building. We had an issue going on, the big thing was going out smoking cigarettes, not letting anybody know, so he'd leave the line unattended, he'd be outside, we'd see him go to his car, just difficult things that he did.
And did you see him drink any alcohol that evening?
No, I did not.
Okay. And you heard Officer Windberg say that it's possible that you told her he could have gone behind the bar?
He was behind the bar. He was putting glasses away. David Kelly had mentioned to me that he saw him with a shot glass in his hand, which I also saw, which went into a bus bucket. So it could have been chipped, could have been dirty, could have been whatever. But I, David was behind the bar and I was around the corner. And I did go and look, and I did see the shot glass, or Rock's glass, in the bucket.
Did you at any time see this employee drink from that?
No.
And do you have any policies as far as employees going behind the bar at all?
We're pretty strict about that. If a bartender leaves the bar, he has to get a manager, either Jimmy or myself, or whoever on the floor cover, to make sure that bar is covered. It's a small bar, people can reach, we've had problems with that, which we take care of. So the bar is always tended to. So when Jeremy went behind the bar to help the bartender to put the glassware away, the bartender's there. He would not go behind. We're very strict about, do not go behind the bar.
Okay. And I believe you said he went out to his car that night?
He smoked. Now, our smoking area for the employees is, we have a patio out front, but we have big glass windows. So they're designated smoking area for the customers, it's away, but you can see the whole window. Looked out, he was gone. Saw him coming back across the parking lot. Said he had to get cigarettes or something like that.
So you asked him what he was doing out there?
Yeah, I asked him, yeah. Because I was looking for him to get in the kitchen to work, and I couldn't find him.
And does he, you said he also goes behind the bar and gets trash and glasses?
He goes, at the end of the night, he'll go behind, they do the round in the bathrooms, and he'll go behind the bar and pick up the trash. The bartender usually pulls it out, he gives him a bag, he takes it around, puts it with the other trash, then it goes up to the dumpster.
And you said you thought he left early that night, is that-
8:30-ish.
8:30-ish, okay.
Maybe earlier, I'm really not positive, but it was 8:00 when I let him go. So I'd say it could be somewhere like 20 after 8:00, or 8:30-ish, 25 minutes of.
Nothing further, thank you.
Officer Magnuson?
Hey, Mr. Weatherby, do you remember talking to Officer Windberg on the 26th at the bar?
She's a lady that came to the restaurant. Yes, I do, yeah.
Did you remember, Kelly heard that Mr. Kelly had told you that the employee must have poured shots from the fireball, liquor shot dispenser at the bar?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
And where did you get that information?
That was, I got that from, she mentioned it to me, and David had mentioned it to me, and that's when I brought up, well, I saw the Rock's glass. Now, we were all confused, but I saw the, I mean, I had to really dig into this afterwards. This was, when she arrived, we did not know that he was a 1.14. We had no clue, okay? So we really had to dig into this. So we dug in, first thing was the shot glass. Yeah, it came, he saw him walk with the shot glass. There is a fireball dispensing machine that, yeah, maybe if you turned your head for a minute, he could get, he could get to it, but we didn't see it, and you know, we know the glass made it into the bucket. This is, we found this out after I had talked to her.
So at the time, you thought that it was a likely-
A possibility.
A possibility, yeah. You know, the employee was terminated?
He was suspended.
Suspended first, and then was-
That day, because the officer asked me, "Why is he still working there?" He had told us that he blew a .03. Now, so I looked at that, it's all, he probably had a nip in his car. I didn't know the severity of the problem then. Soon as we found out, we suspended him. And then-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we let him go that Friday.
And one of the reasons for his firing was that he had stolen alcohol?
That was, the reason was the whole mess we had going on. We don't know whether he stole alcohol or not. We don't know where the alcohol came from that he drank, because it didn't seem like it came from our building when we checked everything.
Do you remember going to the AMITH Police Station to talk to Officer Gordon Gibbons on February 2nd? Did you tell him, as he indicated in his report, that the employee was fired for theft after it was learned that he stole alcohol from the restaurant and was arrested for operating under the influence?
I said to him that we, the way I thought I phrased it, and my wife was there, and she was quite distraught, was that if he had stolen alcohol from the building, he would be terminated. That was, that was what I, was at.
And he was terminated?
Hmm?
And he was terminated?
Later on. He was terminated because we really feel anybody that drinks like that shouldn't be in our building.
Well, your interview with Officer Gibbons was on the 3rd of February, and he was terminated, was he not, on the 2nd?
Yes, he was. Came to get his paycheck. I suspended him. He came to get his paycheck. I gave him his paycheck, and then he did this text to my wife and myself. And because of certain things he had said in the kitchen, that made us go to the police department, because we felt that maybe we needed somebody to watch over us, which they did. They checked our house and they checked that.
Officer, I understand you had some legitimate concerns there.
So we didn't talk to him until the officer came on Sunday, at which point Mr. Leatis said, "Call him," and we called him and brought him in. That's when we found out about the 1.4 and the severity of the drinking. We suspended him then.
I'm just trying to get the timeline straightened out. So he was suspended on January 28th, and I'm holding the letter of suspension from Mr. Leatis. And he was terminated after investigation on February 1st.
Yeah.
And you had this conversation with Mr.-
February, oh, excuse me. February 1st, we terminated him, I gave him his, the Friday, I don't have the dates, but we terminated him, I gave him his check. He texts us right away, we went the next day, which would be a Saturday.
Third, you met with Officer Gibbons?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And there seems to be a little confusion. Did you tell Officer Windberg when she came to the Black Sheep on the 26th, did you tell her that you had been working on the 24th?
What do you mean? I was there.
You were there on the 26th?
I was there the night he, I mean, I'm bad with dates, but I was there the night that, in question of his drinking, I was on duty. And Sunday was, I am a tip certified employee, but I was working the night that this all happened.
Do you remember telling Officer Windberg that?
I don't know if she asked, but I was there. I mean, I don't know, but I was definitely there, because Mr. Leatis was in Florida.
You on the board, how many questions of this witness, Eric?
You said, "We didn't know he was a .14." What did you mean by that?
He told us that he didn't, he was late for work, and he said, "I got stopped for drunk driving, and I did a .04," because he's a minor. And at that, I'm saying to myself, you know, "I got a problem here." Had I known he had been a 1.4, he never would have stepped in the door. I would have said, "You're terminated."
That was the next day?
I didn't find that out until, that was a Wednesday, he got stopped. He came to work Thursday, Friday, Saturday. She came in on, the officer came in on Sunday. That's when we found out the severity, and not by, not by the officer, by the employee himself.
Did you give him a shift drink?
No.
That's all I have. Anyone else?
I have a question. You seem to remember that he was no longer working approximately 8:00, but he was there for some time after. What was he doing?
He was, he was still, still working, he was still on the clock, but he wasn't cooking. So he was doing cleanup, pulling stuff out from the freezer to go into the, into the walk-in cooler, he was doing the trash run, and then that was it, he was done.
May I have a follow-up, if I may, if everyone's done?
I just had a couple of questions. So you said that you didn't see him drinking?
No, I did not.
Under what period of time was he under your direct observation?
From the minute he came, well, direct observation, I'm in the building, so no, he's not under my direct observation, but I'm there. But I'm in the front of the house, I'm in the kitchen, I'm all around. So he works the line, and he's got another guy he works with. So I keep an eye on, I mean, I keep an eye, that's why we're there. Jimmy or I are always in that building at night.
So when the bartender left?
He didn't leave the building. He went, he went to the back of the building. He's still there. David had not left the building, he wasn't through.
What was he doing in the back of the building?
I don't know exactly. Went to the bathroom, I don't know what he did, but I knew he left the bar.
Was the bar still open at that time?
Oh, yeah. This customer's there, yeah.
What time did you close that evening?
I would say 9:30, somewhere in there, 9:30, quarter to 10 at the latest. It's this time of year, we close early.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Mr. Weatherby, did you hear the testimony that the employee said that his boss had just been giving him shot after shot?
Yes.
And his boss, I'm assuming, would that be-
That would be me.
Did you ever give him shot after shot?
No, that would never happen.
And you said one other thing about a, he sent you a text message?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have that text message with you, that he sent you?
I have it on my phone. They should have, you don't have copies of that, or? Got to start the phone up, this will take, sorry, I'm old school.
When you get the text message up, do you want to show it to Officer Magnuson?
Yep. But we did that because my wife, my wife works in the kitchen with him and she's heard some of his remarks about what they do to people and that, and she got nervous. So the police were very nice, they had people come by our house at night and check the restaurant.
All right, nothing else? Okay, you can step down, sir.
Thank you.
I just have?
Oh, well, excuse me, Mr. Holcomb has a question.
You terminated him, it was several days later, February first, was it? When you finally terminated?
Friday, I don't know what the date was.
Was the first.
It was February fourth.
And, and that was when you learned that his blood alcohol level was?
We had learned the Sunday before, when, the Sunday that we closed, that's when we learned, we found out from him and the report. We made him bring the police report to us. So at that point, he was suspended not to be, not to come near the building.
Okay.
And then we got his paycheck ready Friday, he was let go.
Okay. So it was, it was because of the level of alcohol in his blood?
Anybody that worked for us that got, got stopped, we'd be concerned about, but to see a twenty-year-old with that kind of alcohol, that, in my opinion, is not a first offense.
Well, I went back to what you said earlier, that apparently he told you at first, or you learned at first that the blood alcohol was?
Point oh-three.
Point oh-three?
That's what he told us.
So you weren't concerned with the fact?
I was concerned and I was going to wait for Mr. Leada's to come back from Florida, but I was, I wasn't, you know, wouldn't call a panic, but that's a shot. Still wrong, because he's a minor. But when I saw the severity of the one-point-four, that's, that's a whole nother ballgame in our book.
I see, all right. And had you ever given him alcohol on premises?
No.
Nothing whatsoever?
No.
I have a question for Officer Gibney.
Do you have questions for him? Okay, Teddy.
My only question is, is there a pattern of, of other people drinking on the premises while they're working?
Not really, no. In fact, we used to do, you know, you could stay here and have a drink afterwards, but I had quite a discussion with Teddy Zambellis about it and we stopped it. We just didn't want the employees there. First of all, the bartender might give them something free, you know, blah, blah, blah. We'd just go, go someplace else. That's, that's been our feeling.
Any other witnesses?
Uh, yes, I do. David Kelly?
David, you want to step up there? David, you were sworn, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I just pay your last name, is it Y or EY?
EY.
Mr. Lett.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Good evening, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, were you working the evening of January twenty-fourth?
Yes, I was.
Okay, what time did you go in that night? Do you recall?
Five o'clock.
Okay. And do you recall what time you worked till about?
I'd say about ten o'clock or so.
And what was your position there?
Bartender.
And at some point during the evening, did you happen to see the employee that's in question here today?
Uh, yeah, his shift started at the same time as mine. Or maybe before, but he was there.
And did you have any interaction with him that evening?
Uh, yeah, it's a very small building, so we work closely.
And did you happen to notice if he came behind the bar at any point?
To get my trash at the very end of the night and to do a glass rack during, during the night.
And at any point that evening, or any other evening, did you ever see him drink on the premises?
Never.
Did you ever serve him anything?
No.
Did you mention anything, or there was some mention about whether somebody blew, or stood behind the bar and took fireball shots?
I told Charlie, I saw him with a glass in his hand that he put in the bus bucket, but like I said, he helps with glasses and stuff like that, so it could have easily been a dirty glass, for all I've known. It could have been a wine glass, you know, it could have been anything, but it was, it just happened to be a shot glass that time. The spot where we put our dirty plates and, and glasses is right next to the bus bucket, which is also right next to the entrance to the bar.
Did you happen to see him go to his car all that evening?
I was more focused on my customers, but I do see him leave the building a lot to go smoke, so I don't really look to see where he's going.
Nothing further, thank you.
Officer Magnuson.
Just, just one question. Had this employee ever asked you for alcohol in the past?
He has asked.
How many times has he asked?
I don't know, maybe in the beginning, a few times, and I've told him no every time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I assume you're over twenty-one?
Yes.
Make that clear, because you do look young, so. Any other questions?
Yeah, who did the employee work directly, or did the employee work directly for?
For Jim and Charlie.
Okay, so not, not for you directly?
Um, I might be a little confused. So he worked for the kitchen, obviously, and Jim's his boss and Charlie's his manager.
Okay, all right, that's fine. And so that evening, he may have, he was behind the bar for, for just cleaning up and, and stocking glasses and that sort of thing?
That's correct.
Okay. And then what time did he actually leave the restaurant?
I would, somewhere between eight fifteen, eight thirty, I would say.
Okay. Do you keep time sheets?
Yes.
What did, what did the time sheet say?
Thirty.
Eight-thirty, that's when he left?
That's when he punched out. That doesn't mean he left at that time. Like I say, he walks out to his car, he, he's not cooking directly, so he's not behind the line. He goes out to the trash, and sometimes he steps out and have a cigarette, we don't know, but he punched out at eight-thirty.
Okay, but this, you don't know what time he punched out?
No, I wouldn't know that. I don't have his time card, no.
Your best memory was around what, eight fifteen?
I would say so. He took my trash just before that, and that's pretty much the last thing he does before he goes up all the way back to throw it, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Lett, do you have any other witnesses?
Just Mr. Leada's now, if you get.
Okay.
Here, hold on.
Either, whatever you're comfortable with.
Could you just say your name, please?
James A. Light.
And Mr. Leada's, what is your role at the Black Sheep Bar and Grill?
I am the owner and bartender.
And were you in the area on January twenty-fourth of this past?
No, I was not, I was in Florida.
And at some point, did you hear about this incident involving this employee that we've been talking about today?
On Saturday prior to our meeting with him, I was informed by Charlie.
And what did you learn from that?
He told me that the employee had been stopped going home, he had been arrested for OUI, and when I heard that, I asked Charlie to call him, get him in, so we could have a discussion and find out what happened.
At some point, did you suspend him?
Yeah, I suspended him that day.
And was it, would that be January twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay, and what happened after that? What did you do after that point?
Well, after the police officers coming to the building, I got everybody to get tip-certified. I asked everybody questions about the night in question, and then I made my decision to fire the employee, terminate his employment loss.
When'd you make that decision?
I made it probably on the Tuesday of that week, but on the Friday, we give paychecks out, so that, he was formally told at that time that he was terminated.
Okay, so, and everybody got recertified, is that correct?
Correct.
And does that include, was Amanda Allen working there as well?
Yes.
Okay, did she get recertified too?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have a copy of their signatures that they signed and read the materials?
Yes.
Yes, that'll be, that's here. Each one of these is a slip, so the employee, date of birth, everything you want to say.
Before we get into all that, is there any question, any dispute, Officer Magnuson, as to whether when they closed down, he got all his employees tip-certified? Is, is, is that an issue?
I have certificates for everybody but Amanda, and I don't know if, I don't know if she still works there, or if she's got, so that would be everything, that would be all the employees that we know of.
So you don't have to?
I do have Amanda's here, if you want to see it.
You want to show Officer Magnuson? All right, so we have a stipulation that you, you closed down the business until all of the employees got tip-certified and then you reopen the business. Is that correct, Officer Magnuson?
Yes.
So we don't have to see all those documents.
And that's, no further witnesses, thank you.
Okay. Now.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure, go ahead, Tracy.
Sir, have you, are you familiar with the rules and regulations and the mandatory training for managers and owners that?
Yes.
And have you attended?
I've attended just about all of them, last twenty years. I've come to every, every meeting that the police in the town has had, I've come to just about all of them.
So you're aware that your employees should have been tips trained? Okay.
And did you do anything as a result of that?
We know we did already. Thank you.
I have a question, Mike.
Go ahead.
Mr. Leada's, would you describe the employee as a good employee?
He's a good cook. He had issues and we had given him a second chance.
So what was the, what was the first chance?
He wasn't adhering to policies. Things were going out of the building. I have no actual proof it was him, so I cannot accuse him, but.
Well, did he know that you had issues with him?
We had a discussion. We had a discussion about it.
I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to give you the benefit of the doubt by saying, maybe this kid was going out to his car and doing shots on his cigarette breaks. I can't for the life of me figure out why he would get pulled over and throw you under the bus and jeopardize his job. It doesn't make any sense to me.
He probably knew he was going to be terminated anyway at the time. He's, I, I've had to go out to his car and get him, bring him back in. As Charlie said, sometimes he would disappear, and that was part of the reasoning we got rid of him.
Was he ever drinking in his car when you?
Not when I saw him. I could not follow him around everywhere, but he would disappear at times.
I understand, but nobody, nobody ever smelt alcohol on his breath while he was at work?
We don't get that, we wouldn't get that close to him. He didn't exhibit any signs of intoxication. He is a young adult that is boisterous at times, and we assume that to be his nature all the time.
Did you know he was twenty?
Yes.
Can I ask Officer Gibney a question?
Who?
Officer Gibney.
Officer Gibney.
Officer Gibney, can you tell me if there was a search of his vehicle at the time of the stop, or?
Yes, there, there would have been a tow inventory done. I don't have a copy of that inventory report, though, that would be something that happened.
Would you have known if there was alcohol found in his vehicle?
I wasn't present for the inventory, I'd already left the scene, it was conducted by Officer Tebow. And I never looked at the inventory report after that, it just would have been placed in the case folder. So only had I, if I had specifically looked at it, would I have known. Had alcohol been found, it would have been noted on that. I just don't know the answer to that question without looking at, on the inventory report itself.
Officer Magnuson, do you have the answer to that question?
No, I don't, I have, I have the inventory.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lett, do you want to ask her anything?
I have one second.
About that specific issue?
Uh, not about that specific issue, no, thank you.
All right, so that concludes our witnesses?
I have one, I have one more question, though, for?
Of whom?
Officer Magnuson. What is the time from the point of ingestion typically by his weight that it would have to take to get to that, to get to that blood alcohol content?
That, the, the exact timing may be a little bit above my educational standard. I can tell you, according to my training at the police academy, that a hundred-and-fifty-pound person who ingests an ounce and a half of alcohol will see a rise in blood alcohol, alcohol level of about point zero-two. So a one-four would indicate that that, oh, let me back up. And also that that same person would metabolize about that same amount every hour. So the fact that someone had a blood alcohol level of point one-four would indicate that they had the equivalent of seven drinks in their system at that time. And they may have metabolized more, they may have had more, more recently. It's not uncommon to arrest somebody for operating under and watch them get drunker and drunker as they're back at the station, as they get more alcohol into their bloodstream.
Okay, I, I do have issue with that question, if I may. I do a lot of OUI cases, it's a very scientific formula, it depends on their weight, it depends, it depends on.
And we don't have any evidence as to how much he weighed or what he had to eat or any of that stuff.
I'm just trying to get a general sense of timing.
It's so difficult, it depends on so many different factors and.
I'd agree with that.
It does.
It would require expert testimony.
Yes.
But it's not unreasonable to assume that if he, if it was estimated that he left at eight-thirty and was pulled over at nine-fifteen, forty-five minutes was probably a good guesstimate as to when a couple of shots, or several shots, might take effect.
You just don't know.
I, I know, it's.
Could he be guzzling?
I'm just, I'm just trying to determine what a reasonable person would deduce.
That's why it's, you need expert testimony for that.
But he, he never claimed to have, I mean, well, it doesn't matter, okay.
What he said was that he had just left work.
Correct.
He was driving at a high rate of speed within a mile of the Black Sheep headed away to his destination. It seemed to indicate that he, that he was in fact coming from that location.
Okay. Thanks. Let's get to the core issue, on the legal issue here. And on, on that letter where Officer Magnuson outlines the potential offenses, the letter of March first, there's no dispute on three and four. So let's talk about one and two, which are the more serious issues. First one is permitting an illegality on the premises to what minor in possession of alcohol in violation of one thirty-eight, chapter one thirty-eight, thirty-four C. And the second one is violation of the local rules and regulations for the failure to ensure minors are not drinking alcohol on the premises. I, I guess my initial comments are to both Officer Magnuson and Attorney Lett, and I'd like you to both respond to this. On the first question, permitting an illegality on the premises, does the evidence support that? We, we have statements from someone who is under the influence of alcohol, probably intoxicated, who says that he was drinking on the premises, who says that he was being fed shots by his boss, is his testimony, he's not here, it's hearsay. And we can consider hearsay, but it goes to the weight of the evidence. You have some absentee person that's under the influence of alcohol making these statements. There's, there's no evidence that anyone on the premises saw him drinking alcohol, or that they allowed it to occur in their presence. So even if, let's assume, for sake of argument, he was drinking at work, and, and I think from some of the questions I've heard from board members, they think that's probably a rational inference. Is there enough to say that the establishment permitted that illegality? What do you say, Mr. Lett?
I, I say they, they, there is not enough evidence to say that.
Why am I not surprised that you answered?
Well, I, I agree with you.
Yes.
I do, too.
Yeah.
I, I, I would agree, you know?
I don't know, I want to hear from Officer Magnuson. Tell me why you don't think there's enough evidence, Mr. Lett.
Well, for one, as, as you indicated just a minute ago, that you're getting testimony from someone that's under the influence of alcohol, and in fact, I've done a lot of OUI cases and I'm sure the police will also agree with me on this, you don't know if the person's even telling you the truth, what they're saying, what they had, and who knows what they're saying sometimes. It's just something someone said, and again, he's not here, and I can understand why he's not here. His criminal charges against him and it wouldn't be wise for him to come testify.
Right.
I totally understand that. And it, it seems that he was, you know, again, I, I don't see anything where they permitted him to, to do it. Just someone that an officer says that he says that. We don't dispute that he said that to the police officer. We just dispute that it's, that it's true, that he, that, you know, this even happened like that. And again, there's, there's, there's no evidence to support it. Nobody has, else has come forward and said that he's ever done that or anybody has ever seen him do that, even allowed that. They, you know, they run a pretty tight ship, other than that, this incident that happened. And it's just not evidence to support it.
Officer Magnuson, do you agree with that?
Um, as finder of fact, you could make a wide range of findings here. The employee said that his boss was feeding him shot after shot. If you were to believe that, then there would be enough basis for offense number one. I think offense number one would require you to find that they knowingly permitted this to go on, not just by accident or not just were unaware. And if you made that finding, then you could find a violation of number one. Or if you found that it was surreptitious and, and that the, the operators of the establishment did not know that he was drinking in the establishment, then you, you could not find a violation of number one. You could find a violation of number two...
I don't want to talk about number two yet.
Okay.
Um, on number one, what evidence is there that the management or even the bartender, he says he didn't, he didn't see him drink? What evidence is there that, that anyone saw this guy drinking alcohol on the property other, other than the statement of somebody who was under the influence of alcohol?
Okay, there is none. Only his statement.
That's, okay. So let's go, let's go on to number two. Violation of rules and regulations, licensee is responsible for ensuring that minors are not drinking alcoholic beverages on the premises. I'll start with you again, Mr. Lett. What do you say to that?
Again, they take steps. They said they never allowed it. They do not permit it. And for anybody that's even, even employee there, at one time in the past, they used to allow a shift drink to, of course, adults and never to a minor. And they do not even do that anymore. Never even, even to adults, they don't. So they do everything they can to ensure that they're not drinking on the premises. It's not clear where he, where he drank. We don't doubt he drank somewhere. We just don't know where. And there's, there's certainly not serving a minor, and they've testified that they wouldn't. And again, you should have some statements from someone that's under the influence saying, saying these things. So we say there is not enough evidence that shows that they're not responsible for ensuring that.
I'm, I'm trying to find that, that local provision. It says licensees are responsible for ensuring that minors are not served alcoholic beverages and are not drinking alcoholic beverages on the licensed premises, whether served to them by an employee or provided to them by another patron or otherwise. It says to make sure they're not served alcoholic beverages and are not drinking alcoholic beverages on the, of the premises. What do you say to that, Officer?
I think it falls under the otherwise language. Drinking alcoholic be, you could find that he was drinking alcoholic beverages on the premises obtained otherwise. And unlike number one, where Mr. Weatherby can affirmatively testify that he did not give any shots, and Mr. Kelly affirmatively testified that they did not give him any shots, they can only testify with respect to number two, that they did not see him drinking. They can't affirmatively address the statement that he made. So there's room there for the board to make a finding that he was drinking in the premises. It was certainly Mr. Kelly's first reaction when he reported it, that he was stealing shots. It was Mr. Weatherby's statement when he went to see Officer Gibbons, that he was fired for stealing alcohol. So it's, it's, there's evidence to, to support that he was drinking in the premises without the knowledge of the, of the proprietors.
So we should hold, you think, uh, let's, let's take a scenario where the bartender goes to the bathroom for a minute. Some minor that's working there, 20 years old, takes a quick shot. Almost sounds like strict liability. Should we be holding establishments responsible under those kind of circumstances?
Yes.
I, I, I think you have to do it on a case-by-case basis. Here you have an employee that clearly had more than one shot, that has a history of problems, history of stealing alcohol, history of asking for alcohol. So I think there's a little more responsibility there. However, the, the level of culpability by the licensee here is on the low end. The responsibility is only failure to supervise, not to take any bad affirmative action on their own. So it's, it's, it's a low-level violation, as I see it.
Can I just say something for a second? You know, I, I think we heard testimony. I'm sorry, I don't remember the young man's name.
Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly. That, and he would, he repetitively told the employee that he could not have shots from the bar. So that, to me, that establishes a standard that the employer has with its employees. You don't take shots from the bar. We don't give shots to employees while they're at work. And, and I mean, how far do you go beyond that? I think, I think that is good and sufficient, as far as I'm concerned, to establish that that's what they were doing.
You cannot, no, just, I don't know the right, the right phrase, but lock someone up or stare at them every second of every minute for every single employee that ever works for you. It's just impossible. You just have to have your policies and is something going to happen somewhere? Is somebody going to turn their back? Is somebody going... Things happen sometimes that you just don't know, but can it happen? It can happen. It's always possible. Well, you take every step you can. I think they took the steps to do it.
Let me ask you, go ahead.
I don't, you know, obviously you've indicated that he wasn't a quote-unquote "model" person. You had concerns. But nonetheless, and I, again, heard the testimony, that he was told, no, I'm not going to offer or give you alcohol. You requested it. I'm not going to give you any. That's, that's not what we do. So, you know, I, I think that's pretty clear.
Well, I can disagree with that because I think we say time and time and time again that the responsibility of a licensed liquor holder is to make sure that alcohol does not get into the hands of minors. That's your responsibility. However, you have to accomplish that. That is the responsibility of the license holder.
Okay. Um, last question to both of you. What, what is the direct evid, what is the evidence in your mind? I guess I'll go to Officer Magnuson first, and then I assume you're not going to agree with this, Mr. Lett. Where's the direct evidence in your mind, Officer Magnuson, that this individual is drinking on, at the rest, at the bar?
His statement, which although it's hearsay, is an admission, it would be admissible in court. His statement that I was drinking at the Black Sheep Bar and Grill. The circumstances, the timing, the location, he's coming from that location in a hurry to go see his girlfriend. He stopped a short distance away. There's high blood alcohol content. I think that the, the circumstances support his statement.
Can I just say something there? You know, again, there's a gap at a time between when he punched out at 8:30 and when he was stopped by the officer at 9:18. Um, you know, and it's a very short distance. Um, you know, it's certainly two or three minutes. He, he would easily have been on Sutuket far enough of it at, at that rate of speed to be stopped. So something occurred or could have occurred that was out of the control of the employer. And I, I don't think we can account for that period of time and establish, and we have nothing to indicate that we know or don't know what he was doing in that, during that period of time. So, you know, I, I think the other thing is, you know, I'd heard testimony that, well, an individual's recollection of time slows down. Well, he still thought it was nine o'clock an hour later at the station. So saying that he had just left in his mind was some period of time. And at the time that he made that statement, his blood alcohol already had to be fairly high. So he had, seems to me, had, had a lot of difficulty at that point giving reliable estimates of the time that, that, uh, between when he left the, uh, his, his job and when he was stopped.
I think that Mr. Weatherby testified that he, that he was off the clock at 8:30, but that he was there for some period of time after that. And I'm sure just how well he was. So I don't think 8:30 is a firm, is a firm time. And sure, you've got gaps that you have to consider. I don't dispute that. You've got gaps that you have to consider. One of the reasons why we ask people arrested for operating under about the time is to show that, that they're not, that they can't estimate time, that they've lost track of time. That's why we asked them at the station, do you know what time it is? We're looking for that incorrect answer. It's off by hours. And that's, that's what you got on, that's what he gave at the station when the sergeant required it.
The problem I'm having, though, is, is in the last analysis, the only evidence we have that this guy was drinking at the bar was his statement, and he's not here. And he's a criminal defendant in a case. And he's not subject to being questioned or examined. And I'm having a tough time.
I mean, is well within your discretion for the people to be, please?
So, may I, Mr. Chairman? So I have the same problem, and I also have this, the norms issue with the time lapse. And as I previously said, no, nobody admits to where they were drinking, especially if it's their workplace. You know, you don't admit if it was a friend's house. Unless you have a beef, you don't admit where it was. And the fact that he sent a text saying, say goodbye to your liquor license, and then another one saying, you know, I've got pictures of me and minors. I agree, he probably drank there. But, you know, the other, the other side of me says, this would be a great setup for an employee that he was pissed at, that he was going to get back at somehow. Go get drunk in that 45-minute time period when you get, you know you're on the way out from your job. So when you get pulled over and you get asked, you throw him under the bus. And I'm not saying that that happened, but, you know, if I have reasonable doubt, which I do, I can't find them guilty of number two. Again, I, I don't think they were...
Okay.
They're guilty of permitting. And, you know...
Does anyone else want to be heard on their feelings as to whether or not there's a violation of one or two? Any board members?
Well, my opinion is, I'm, I'm in agreement that, I believe, just based on the evidence that's limited, that he probably was drinking there, but we do not have enough, I think, to hold them on those...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's fair to penalize an establishment on the basis of a guess or a suspicion. I think we have to have a reasonable basis to do that. And I'm really bothered by the fact that we don't have a live witness here, somebody whose credibility we could assess, see how he testifies, see how consistent or inconsistent he is. I think the officers did a great job, and they testified well. I don't have any problem with anything that they did. These are, in my opinion, legal governing principles that we have to deal with after we absorb the factual information. So we have, um...
The only question I have relating to number two, though, is whether or not the fact that they were not tip certi, tip certified that evening would lead to their responsibility to ensuring. But I don't, I think that that's open to interpretation. I think we should stick to the facts that, that we know.
All right. If, if I understand the feelings of the board correctly, nobody's prepared to make a motion to find responsibility on number one and two. Is that correct?
Correct.
Tracy?
That's why I feel, I, I think they've already agreed to three and four.
Okay. So three and four, we don't really have to make any motion on that we are finding them responsible. They stipulate the responsibility. They agree that they're responsible for three, which is violation of Yarmouth rules and regs, section 1.09a, failure to train and maintain recertification requirements of an approved server program for bartenders and wait persons. And number four, violation of rules and regulations, section 1.01.
You said we don't need to make a finding?
No. A and C, failure to have the Yarmouth rules and regs available on the premises with a record of employee review. Now, Officer Magnuson's agreed that once there was follow-up, they shut down the business for, I think it was a day, was it, to get everybody certified, certified. So he mentioned certain mitigation factors, um, which I think, um, which I think apply here. So my recommendation, I, I, well, let me hear what Officer Magnuson's recommendation is, given, given the findings on three and four.
I, I, I think it's at the low end of the scale for, for violation and that you're looking at a, you know, it's shocking that they had no one there tips trained and that so many of their people were not tips trained, yet at the same time, they took effective remediation. So I think you're at the very low end of the scale for a warning, or if you were inclined to do a suspension, it should be held in advance.
All right. My recommendation would be, again, I, I don't think we can consider things we didn't make fi, findings on. So based on three and four, excuse me, my recommendation would be a warning.
So moved. I make, I make a motion that we find them in violation of items three and four, section 101.09a, 1.01, and issue a warning.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Um, I might make a recommendation to the business. I think, first of all, you might want to consider whether you want anybody under 21 years of age to have access to the bar area. And number two, whether you don't want to, whether you should put into effect some kind of plan that if a bartender is momentarily missing from the bar, that somebody in management be at that bar area so that nobody that's a minor in that property can get access to alcohol. I would strongly recommend that you do those two things.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
And I, I could be wrong. I thought that minors could serve alcohol at 18. Is that correct? Or am I wrong?
I think they can.
I'm not sure.
I think, I think they can. Waiters and...
Yeah, between 18 and 21, they can work in the establishment and they can serve alcohol. Let me state one.
But, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about being alone...
I wasn't sure.
In the bar area.
Right. I understand that.
So that they could avail themselves of the drink without any other supervision. I think you have to make sure that you're protected against that because even though the board didn't make the requisite findings, I can tell you that if they had, you'd probably be getting a lot different result than you got tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Lett.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, officers. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam Chairman, that concludes our hearing. I'll get some water.
Okay. Our next item is the stretch code article. I'm not sure who's doing the presentation for that.
How are you doing?
Hi, Sean.
How are you doing?
Good.
All right. Good evening. If you're wondering, I am over 21.
I do with you. That's right.
I was here a few months ago presenting on our Green Communities Initiative. Part of that, as I mentioned, was adopting the stretch code at this year's town meeting, putting it on the warrant. So today I'm going to give you a refresher and talk about the town meeting warrant article. So with that, the Green Communities Program, as you may recall, is a grant program funded by the DOE R. It provides grants to qualifying communities to fund energy efficiency initiatives, renewable energy, and innovative projects. How do you become a Green Communities? You get designation from the state, and it requires meeting five energy-efficient criteria. If the, as part of meeting those criteria, what you're eligible for is up to, Yarmouth alone would be eligible for $180,000 in grant money, with future grants up to $250,000 per year, our grant cycle. A little history, additional history on the grant communities. To date, $85 million in grants... To date, $85 million in grants have been given to 210 green communities. Last year, $14 million in grants were given to 72 designated communities. So, it's a very strong program. Here's some example communities. They're a little different than the ones I had shown you last time, but since 2010, Mashpee has gotten $446,000 in grants, Provincetown $178,000, Wellfleet $260,000, and Middleborough just in a year got $197,000. So it's a substantial amount of money with these grant programs. What are the Green Communities qualification criteria? You may recall, the first is adopt as-of-right sighting in designated areas for renewable energy and alternative energy generation. Yarmouth had done that way back in 2010. Adopt expedited 12-month application and permitting processes. Yarmouth's done that years ago as well. Establish an energy use baseline. We're working on that currently. We have five years' worth of our utility data in the state's Mass Energy Insights Portal, which is really excellent to use. We've just completed a series of building audits with RISE for all of our buildings. We should have all those reports complete by the end of this month, and we'll be working on our energy reduction plan, which we have to get a 20% reduction in the next five years. We're working with Cape Light Compact on that. We hope to have that done by summertime for a submittal in October. The next item is purchase fuel-efficient vehicles. That's part of our fleet study as well. That was a draft is complete. That was done in 2017. And the last item, which is why we're here tonight, is adopting the stretch code, which is to require new residential construction and new commercial and industrial real estate construction to minimize lifecycle energy costs. So, that is what we're hoping to get on the warrant for this annual town meeting. So what is that criteria of five? Basically, it's the D O R recommending a way for cities and towns to meet the minimized lifestyle costs is to adopt the stretch code, which is an appendix to the Mass State Building Code. It must be adopted as a warrant article. What is the stretch code? It requires buildings to meet higher efficiency standards. I think we're all trying to do that, but this takes it a step further. It's been adopted by 216 towns and cities across Massachusetts. The stretch code uses a performance approach, evaluates the overall efficiency of a building and not just the minimum efficiency of target design elements. Also, the energy efficiency is based on a HERS index, which is a nationally-recognized industry standard for calculating energy performance. It applies to new residential construction. It does not apply to additions, and it also applies to new commercial construction, over 100,000 square feet, and supermarkets, and labs, and warehouses, which we don't have any of those in Yarmouth. Last year, we did account, new construction permits that were issued in Yarmouth were 25, so it really only affects about 20, 25 permits each year. There's a lot of misconceptions, I think, that go along with the stretch code. So, previously in my presentations, we didn't have this, but I wanted to talk about some of them. First, the stretch code is new and experimental. It's based on Energy Star Home, which has been around for 20 years, and many towns have had the stretch code implemented for over seven years. The stretch code requires tight and healthy homes. Building science has evolved, and the base code already requires stringent air sealing, so that's a misconception. We will give up our local control if we adopt it. There's no local control over the statewide building code, and also, towns can opt out of the stretch code anytime they want. Town residents will be required to update their existing homes. No, the stretch code only applies to new residential construction and new commercial construction over 100,000 square feet. Additions, renovations, and repairs are exempt from the stretch code. The stretch code is really no longer much of a stretch code. The 2006 HERS rating in the building code was 70, I believe? Oh, it's currently 70. It was 100. It's currently 70. The next iteration of the building code, the 2018 code, it will be down to 62, and the HERS rating that requires part of the stretch code is 55. The difference in the cost for the HERS energy raider is between $750 to $1,250 for a typical single-family home, but there are incentive and rebates that can help defray that cost. What is the HERS process? Basically, the HERS raider reviews the building plans with a computer model. He does some in-process inspections. The first is a duct-tight test. The second, he comes back and tests the insulation, and the third is a blower door test. And the final energy model is based on the verification of the performance equipment. What is the HERS system, the Home Energy Rating System? It's an annualized energy analysis, looking at all of the aspects of the home, heating, cooling, water heating, lighting, and appliances. The reference home is 100 here on this chart. It's based on the 2006 code, and as I mentioned earlier, it's currently 70. And by 2018, it will be at 62, which should just be... And with the stretch code at 55, that's just 11% more efficient for a home to meet the stretch code. What are the incentives? There's many incentives and rebates that go along with having an energy-efficient home. There's builder incentives. There's residential incentives, particularly with the Cape Light Compact providing LEDs, and there's also rebates on the HERS raider modeling. This is a great example. It's a bit of a busy slide. The D O E R had put this out, so they're comparing a 2,550-square-foot home in Worcester, three-bedroom, new construction, with oil heat. I chose this. They looked at it for natural gas and electric heat. This was the most expensive, so I wanted to take the worst-case scenario. You can see the builder's cost to meet the stretch code would be $4,000. However, there's 1,500, almost $1,600 in rebates. So his cost would be about $2,400 compared to the base code. Passing that cost along to the homebuyer, it changes their down payment by $240 and their annual mortgage payment by $192, which is about $16 a month. But the homeowner gets a reduced energy cost per year of $697, almost $700, and their year-one cash flow would be about $260, and year-two and beyond would be about $500. So, they make that money back right away. This is an even busier slide, but it just shows you the costs related for meeting the base code and meeting the stretch code and what those differences are. It's good to take a minute to absorb it, but I won't go over it. It just shows you the $4,000 additional cost and where they're... And how they're allocated. The stretch code communities, you can see many communities in Massachusetts have adopted the stretch code, 216 of 351, which is 61%. And our next step is just the annual town meeting warrant article, which is to see if the town will vote to accept Appendix 115.AA of the Massachusetts Building Code, 780 CMR, the stretch energy code, including amendments or modifications thereto, regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy effective January 1, 2019. With that, I'll take some questions.
Great. Mark, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thanks, Sean.
Mike? Norm?
All set.
Eric?
Yes, I do. Several questions. Number one, the presentation said it only applied to new residential construction. I recently learned that it may apply to additions as well. Can you address that? Can somebody address that?
I have not heard that. Seth Pickering is here from...
No?
Yes.
Good evening. Seth Pickering from Department of Energy Resources. I'm the regional coordinator for the Green Communities Program here in Massachusetts. So, the question is, is the stretch code applicable to additions and renovations?
Yes.
So the answer is?
Absolutely no.
I'll be happy to go through the rig with you, if you'd like, but the answer's no.
Residential, does that mean single-family dwellings or multifamily dwellings?
It can mean both.
So, it's all residential, be it single-family or multifamily?
New residential construction, whatever your building inspector decides meets that requirement.
Does it include affordable housing? Would you say that on an A to F scale, with the state building code, with the IEC, which is the International Energy Code, requiring a C to be energy compliant, would this require an A? Would that be a fair statement? I mean, is it that much?
With the most recent changes to both the base code and the stretch code, with them being so closely aligned, if you're going to say that the base code is a C, I'd say that the increase in efficiency to the stretch code is a B.
B.
It's a bump, but it's not a big one.
What would you estimate is the percentage increase of complying with the stretch code as opposed to complying with the IEC in terms of cost? 10%? 20%?
So, I would have to stick with the numbers that are in the case studies that we have on our website, which are similar to what was presented tonight by Sean, but in general, the increase in cost would be between $750 and about $1,500 across the board. And so, it would be difficult to apply a percentage to that, because, you know, that's a fairly generic cost for any sized new residential construction.
And in the slide that said communities can opt out, does that mean... Can this be adopted and then not enforced? Is it at the building commissioner or inspector's discretion whether or not to enforce it?
Nope. So, once it's adopted here in town as the building code, it's the building code here in town. But if the town found that, once they become designated as a green community and after the stretch code is made the code here in town, if it's not working for the town, they don't feel that it's a benefit. You know, however that is interpreted by the town, if you want to renounce the stretch code, you can do that. You'll lose your Green Communities designation. That doesn't mean you'll have to, you know, remit the money that you may have received in grants, but that is an option for towns to... They can renounce it if they wish, and...
Okay, that's fine. My last question, any studies been done between the relationship between hurricane damage, which is tremendous negative pressure, and the tremendous... I won't say tremendous, but the significant positive pressure that is on the inside of a stretch code-compliant home?
So, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question about affordable housing as well. Is there any flexibility in the way that the article's written in terms of allowing an exemption for affordable housing?
So, I'll be happy to get you some material on this, but it's pretty well documented that energy-efficient homes are better for people that are on fixed incomes in terms of things like affordable housing, because they're saving money every month.
Correct, but they may not have... It may put the project itself in its entirety over, you know, a feasible amount. You're talking 4,000 to get started, and if we had a multifamily affordable housing complex with 70 units, that's a significant amount of money. I understand that the user, in the end, will benefit, but I'm talking about a developer funding something like that. I just wondered if we had the flexibility for some type of exemption, should that be the case.
So, as far as I know, the answer is no. I don't claim to be an expert on affordable housing. I'm sure there's criteria that are set on costs and who actually qualifies to be able to be housed in affordable housing. I think that, in all likelihood, the best way to get an answer on that, for you as an elected official here in town, feel free to reach out to any of the 216 towns that are already doing this and see if that's come up as an issue in any of their towns. To date, I'm not aware of it.
So, in terms of making sure that they meet the HERS rating, they have to hire a company to...
So, the HERS raider is a contractor, you know, a sub that the general contractor would hire, just like an engineer, you know, a sanitary engineer. The additional cost would be about $750 to $1,500.
Over this $4,000?
No, that's included in there.
I see a cost of $500.
So, the rebates and incentives are available for the costs on the HERS raiders.
Obviously, you know, I mean, the grant funding's fine. My concern still stays the same, is that... I'm just concerned that we put the cost of construction, we put a burden on them. But that's just... That's me. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do these increased costs, you say roughly are $750 to $1,500 for a single-family residential dwelling? Is that based on your... The building experience over a certain period of time? Question A. And question B is, is there any inflation factor that we should consider going forward?
So, the studies that were done and the stuff that Sean gave you doesn't include a complete set of them. So, he gave you what is the most expensive deal there, because it identifies an oil-fired home, which, if you look at that second... You look at the second page of that example, it shows you that the additional cost of the furnace is significant. To meet the stretch code with an oil-fired furnace is expensive because of that requirement. It's about a $2,000 add to get that thermal-efficient boiler, furnace. The other examples are for electric heat pump homes, natural gas homes, and propane homes, not nearly as expensive to get to where you need to be on the stretch code for energy efficiency on that. So, that is by far the worst case. In terms of the examples, the examples were generated through a case study that was done independently by a third party. In terms of...
And how recent or how old is that study?
It's fairly recent, within the last year.
Okay.
Yep, so it's fairly current. And it's applicable to the new stretch code and the new base code that became... That went into effect January 1, 2017, which is currently in place. So, it's applicable to the codes that are in place right now. Inflation? I mean, I can't comment on that.
You're not commenting because the study's so recent.
Pardon me?
I said that you probably wouldn't be commenting because the study's so recent.
Yeah, I mean, we can only deal with what we're aware of at this time.
I understand. Thank you.
I have one more question in terms of the grants. Would a grant be able to be utilized to offset the possible increased cost to an affordable housing? I mean, if we were to receive a grant, would we be able to set some aside to help mitigate that additional cost, per se, for like an affordable housing?
For the housing? No, I don't believe so.
I think the developer probably would be doing that. I mean, they're the ones who are going to be doing all the extra work, having the extra heating, or the more efficient heating units, the more efficient hot water heating units as well. So, you know, I'm not sure what they're... How they would go about getting those grants and so forth, but...
No, the town's going to receive grants in exchange to be a green community. What I was asking is if we would be able to help the developers, so it wouldn't impede the possibility of an increased price for a project. I didn't know if we'd be able to use the grants to do that. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Sean. So, we're going to go to the... Everybody has the warrant that was handed out tonight. We're going to go to the final annual town meeting article review and recommendations. And in the interest of time, perhaps we could do it as we had done in previous years, which is kind of grouping some of the regular budgetary... If you just take one and pass it down. Regular budgetary items, unless somebody has a particular question or comment. I guess, I think before we get started, we should get a summary from Dan of some of the... the things that have changed since we've seen this last, there have been some, some items that have changed.
I think noticeably, since the last time you might have seen this was the inclusion, number one for golf on page number one, $61,000. We had had a briefing on golf a while back. We need to have an appropriation to cover this year's operating deficit. So, there's that item that would be there. There's also, this is updated to indicate on page two, operating expenses in the town administrator's office, which reflects the carrying costs of the HR director that's in there, as well as the licensing clerk function that's coming back to administration. The other thing that might be a little bit different from what you're used to seeing in the past is the alignment of the community services group. That's reflected on pages three and four. And then through the rest of the finance items, it's in a format that you usually clean as well as it relates to the operating of public works, water department, septicage. Also in here includes a similar format that's used in the past on free cash grants that we discussed and presented past to you. Also capital budget as well. And what we've done on page 12 is include in the free cash summaries, the listing of items that were requested. If you have note, we've put in the full carrying cost of the DPW facility design and engineering at 1.4 million, top of page 12. The idea there being, and we knew we were gonna have a discussion tonight, this gives you some options as to how you want to finance that, or if you even want to go forward with design and engineering costs this year. The idea would be if it were funded by a free cash request this year, we could be potentially in line for bidding over the winter, late winter of next year. We'd have an estimate in hand for next year's town meeting. That would be the strategy that we had talked about if we went this route. We've also structured the article language for the DPW facility to be flexible. If you wanted to, we could always choose not to put that forward and withdraw that at town meeting, but if you wanted to have a carrying cost to put to the ballot for an override this year on 1.4 million or on the full carrying cost, we've structured the article to be flexible enough that that would be something you could consider as well.
So, I think one of the things we have to talk about with that is the DPW facility, initially, the discussion was that we were going to use the debt drop off to try to fund that.
That's right.
And so-
With a small amount of free cash as well, the debt drop off wouldn't have gotten all of us, all of it there, so now-
Right, but can you just talk about the changes with the school budget and the other things that you've prepared for the board to consider tonight? Based on past, based on some past history, we as a board have covered the student shift, and so I asked town administration to prepare some options in terms of covering the school shift. So, that's where the facility went into the free cash and-
Who are we talking about here?
So, I think it all kind of goes together.
So, on page nine, if we go back to page nine, article number six is the DY language. It's the same as it was last year. We're ironically eerily similar to the same conversation this year as we had last year, and in fact, it's lining up to be on the next meeting in April, that we would hopefully have whatever last minute adjustments the school committee decided to make on the budget, but it becomes a matter of, does the board want to move any of this off to a prop two and a half override? And we gave the flexibility, and I could ask the finance director to come to the microphone to fill in some of the blanks, but we were looking at about a number of 800,000, give or take, to, which would represent a student shift, and 800,000 potentially for an override request. Last year was about 541,000, I think.
So, it's eight and eight?
I think it's eight and eight is the last I'd seen it, yeah. I think the history, the idea behind that is, is the town hadn't had a history of supporting an override, and certainly Ed can fill in more of the blanks, a million dollars or more on education in the past, so we figured, you know, that seemed to be the tilting point on that.
Well, so, I mean, is it an override of a million six?
No.
No, we would consume, we would assume, go ahead, on our side of the operating budget, 800,000 the student shift, if you will.
Okay, how would that be funded then?
We would fund, if you choose to do it this way and not put it all on an override or handle it in a different way. We received good news from Cape Tech. There's about 300,000 in a decrease in their budget because of their student shift away from Yarmouth. And then we have, if we use our debt drop off, about 561,000. So, the combination of the two would allow us to fund the student shift. Obviously, we were preserving the debt drop off to help with capital for things like the middle school project and some of the other things, but that would be, that would be a way to do that, to cover the shift. And that would leave, given the current school budget, another 800,000 that perhaps they would look to reduce their overall increase, or we would have to put some of that on an override, or whichever way you choose to try to close that budget gap.
Okay, so, I guess I just don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because we were talking about the free cash article and the free cash-
How much results from the shift at the Cape Tech, the favorable shift, how much money would that save?
Approximately 300,000, 304,000 dollars.
300 to 304?
It is exactly 304,523 dollars.
304,000, okay. And then on the other, so we'd be short eight, right?
We would, if we cover, if we use debt drop off plus the Cape Tech-
Because we gotta fund it, but it'd be another 800,000 we have to reckon with based on where the school committee left off with their budget.
That's correct, and just-
They also said that out of those, if I read, those five social workers, there was three, I forget the term, behavioral emotional teachers-
Social emotional coaches, yeah.
That they would not have to have, and I think the net difference was 300 and something thousand dollars by keeping the five and minusing the other three.
That's correct.
So, we're probably down to around 500,000, 450 to 500,000 would be the shortfall based on where they are now.
That would be correct, yes. And just to give you perspective, where DY is now, I think there are some numbers that were bandied about. DY is at, the change to us is 7.64%. The 3.9% is because of reduction in state aid, those are the numbers that they're quoting, but the impact to Yarmouth is 7.64%. And then if we were to, if we were only to fund the shift and not do anything more, we would be contributing 5% to their budget, a 5% increase over what they assessed to us last year.
So, the two and a half percent that we had committed originally was approximately 700,000.
That's correct.
And now we're saying at 20,000 a student times the 39, that equals about 800,000 that we're gonna try to work in. So, that's essentially 1.5 billion dollars in new money.
That's correct, almost 1.6.
And that's what percentage?
That's 5%, 5%.
The only problem though, going forward, is we can't rely on that shift in subsequent years at the tech school.
We absolutely cannot.
We can't rely on that, it'll hold there and increase.
We had an advantage of the shift last year as well. That mitigated how much of the override we went for.
Right, yeah, but it's still built in for the future. It's assuming that's gonna continue into the future, and who knows, one way or the other. I mean, we could end up, you know, having no shift next year with DY and have 30 students more at Cape Cod Tech and have to come up with that money, so.
That's correct.
One way or the other.
Yes.
You know, we're still, you know, the, whatever the final number is for DY, they have to come up with more than just that amount to, because Dennis will get some of the savings, whatever amount of savings, they'll get a third of it, so.
Dennis would have over proposition two and a half, or no, over what they paid last year, their increase or their payment would be 0.06%.
Right, and I think last year they had no increase.
That's correct.
Yeah, and Dennis is very generous with their school funding.
That's sarcasm, right?
I know. The, you know, I spent some time over the weekend going through the school budget for the last five years and making comparisons of the major expense items, and there's 20 major categories of expenses, the largest being classroom teachers. And over the last five years, the average budget line increase for classroom teachers is 3.6%. And, you know, if you go to some of the other major categories, retiree, not retiree, health insurance, the average increase over the last five years is 9.2% a year. Retiree health insurance, 6% a year. You know, you go line by line, and there are, in one year, it's one thing, and the next year, it's another thing. You know, there's no consistency unless you look over a long period of time, which is what I attempted to do. Even at the administrative level, the average increase is 4.8% for district administration. And that's combining several line items, but it's all items that have to do with supervisory non-teaching positions. So, you know, we're constantly being hit with this, and, you know, we struggle with health insurance, and we're at 50/50. The school system is at 60% cost to the school system, or to the town, and 40% cost to the employee. So, they ignore the fact that health insurance is going up 9.2% annually over the last five years. And I guess that's a long way around saying that I have difficulty supporting any kind of override. I think that, you know, we should expect the school system to make decisions that will allow them to budget within the constraints of proposition two and a half. The seeds for the problem that the school is having this year were sown three years ago with the agreements that were reached with all the employee groups. And they've compounded each year, and it was, once those decisions were made three years ago, there was nothing that could be done to reverse them. Health insurance went up 9.2%. Well, that's partly because the school system granted dental insurance to the employees at the last contract go around. So, that was even though they were giving substantial COLA increases and substantial step increases to all employee groups, they also granted dental insurance. So, you know, I don't think that, from a municipal standpoint, we would not, we do our damnedest to stay within the proposition two and a half, and we don't make decisions of that nature that lead to being locked into very substantial inflationary increases in a budget. So, I don't support any override. I'd support our taking care of the shift in employees. I think we have a responsibility to do that, but I don't support any override at all beyond that.
Okay, anybody else have any comments on the school portion? Okay, all right, so Dan, I'll let you go through the rest of the budgetary items, and then we'll, we can see if we can, water capital, collective bargaining, free cash, stabilization.
Collective bargaining number is blank for today. We will present the number on at town meeting, barring any last minute legal advice to the contrary to that, but that's the strategy going forward.
Correct. Okay, so-
Is that paid and presented that way at town meeting?
Yes, it is, yeah, yeah. I might ask, I'm not sure if Jeff has the number at the top of his head, but the snow and ice number we've left blank as well.
In article one?
Yeah, we had a late minute run of storms that really was problematic, so he might be able to-
And how is that being funded? At article one's being funded?
It has to be funded out of free cash.
Yeah, that's out of free cash, and I don't have an exact number, Dan, but I think it's fairly safe to say that the money that we've been carrying, which I think was 350,000, we won't need that full amount, but winter's still hanging on here a little bit as well, so there's some challenges in that regard.
But April, is April 1st not the official again of snow and ice from the state?
So decreed, yes, yeah.
So, we're hoping for spring really quick, yeah.
So, I'm just looking at the free cash article, trying to see where that's, yeah, I see page 11.
So, what did you expect to see in there, Tracy?
No, I'm just checking to see where it says how it's funded from.
Well, it wouldn't be in article 11 also. It would just be in article-
Just in the first article, we, yeah, so like, for instance, the golf article, we're not carrying that in the free cash.
Well, there is a notation of it though, but this, but so the total sum, does it equal the amount less article one?
Well, we don't know. We don't have the number yet, but the carrying cost of 350,000.
Don't the, don't the funding articles though usually say where they're funded from? I guess I'm just looking at article one. I just want to make sure we're all set.
Article one has always been worded that way.
Sum of money provided in the operating budget.
So, and the transfer will come from free cash would be the intention.
But in the free cash number, it doesn't reference-
And what we're doing in article one is we're funding the prior, you know, the current year's budget, and then the other articles are funding, you know, future expenditures. We've actually always done it this way, or last five or six years.
Okay.
So, is the free cash actually more than the total shown in article 11? Is it actually 61,000 more than that?
61 plus perhaps around 350 for the snow and ice.
Plus the snow and ice, yeah.
Plus the snow and ice, yeah. So, we had 3 million in free cash.
Okay, we're just showing that.
That's correct.
Separate, but we're not showing the total.
And we're not labeling that article, you know, it's euphemistically described as the free cash article, but we don't use that language anywhere. The free cash is just a funding source.
So, it does also notate that the 364 for the golf is in article three that is inclusive of the free cash article. So, everybody should be aware of that, that that was moved into the, into article three.
Yeah, discussing the, on article three, understanding, not, you know, not sure what the sentiment of the town meeting would be relative to funding golf, by, on page seven, by putting the free cash item there, if they were to take that and cut that from that, we would have to obviously adjust the golf budget accordingly, but it would only be to that article right there. Makes it a little bit cleaner for us to do the accounting.
I understand.
Okay, all right. So, the next thing I think we probably should discuss is what we want to do with the DPW article. There is a article here for article 15, so we could put forward the full amount of the DPW facility. It's prepared that way. I think one of the things that we need to look at in making that decision is what the ballot looks like. I think one of the things that we need to look at in making that decision is what the ballot looks like. And, you know, we're gonna have a, we'll have, if we can leave this here, we'll have the tech school, the DY override, and the DPW facility on one ballot. So that's up to the board, because originally we were going to fund the facility out of the design out of free cash and then go back for a future year debt drop-off. And so this expedites that somewhat. So what's the feeling of the board on that one?
So we could, you know, there's a couple of options to expand on that. Design and engineering is covered in the free cash article, we could reduce the borrowing for the override if you wanted to do by that sum of money, just for the construction carrying cost. We could delete the engineering from free cash and put it all into the borrowing. I mean, over the course of, it's likely it would be twenty-five-year borrowing schedule on that. You know, it's, a lot of organizations do it that way. It's more a matter of precedent, you know, but looking forward in the future, I think it's fall, late fall town meeting for a Mattaquis vote. You guys kind of laid out, you know, the retrospective on DY. I'm sorry to say that I don't see any changing elements in the future to make this situation any better, so there could be a same situation this time next year. So the question becomes, you know, when would be a good time to put this on? It's never a good time to put on thirteen-plus million dollars, but there's just more in front of us as we go forward, so that would be some of the options that we have available to us.
Anybody have any thoughts?
So, here's what will happen. If we pass an override fourteen million without having any plans or design or engineering, that number's going to be twenty-five million next year. And as we have seen in the past, when you go back to the well, the voters don't really like that. So, my preference, you know, I know next year is gonna be a stinker, but I would rather get the plans done, know for certain what the costs are going to be, rather than to approve a number now and find out, as we have in the past, that the budget has doubled from what we had anticipated it was going to be.
Anybody?
To Selectment Tally's point, we will have a new project next year, and we'll know what the dollar value is if we go ahead and fund design and engineering with free cash, no question.
No, and that's, yeah. That's my point, I mean, I don't know that I can be appro, you know, we're funding everything. I don't know that that's wise.
All right, I support the one point four if we can afford it in free cash, but I think we have to wait on Article Fifteen, but.
Yeah, no, I support the one point four if it's in free cash.
I think that would give us something in the hands to, I mean, I just, you know, you try to play out the timing.
Right. Well, like you said, we're gonna have three overrides.
Yeah, but what does next year look like?
Well, no, I'm saying one will be in the fall, Mattaquis will likely be in the fall, so the annual will probably have DPW and tech.
Well, we hope to get tech out of the way this year, so it could potentially just be.
Tech will be on this ballot.
It's coming on this ballot.
It's coming up. The new tech borrowing will be on this May's ballot. We, you guys had already voted to authorize that.
I wonder, yes. I remember having that discussion, but I don't recall.
There was no dollar value assigned to it, if that makes it any easier, right?
That might be why I, okay.
Attorney Bills have any thoughts on that direction? Okay, well, this isn't gonna be going by very fast, because we have to make recommendations on these articles in a minute.
Forty-two of these.
Yep.
There was also a change on the marijuana piece, too, I believe, some late.
There was a piece in the, in your, oh, it's handed out at town meeting, I mean, at tonight's meeting.
So we can restrict the number of licenses, so.
Okay, so how do we want to do this? Do we want to go one by one? Can we take the financial articles and vote them as a group? Need a little help here, folks.
That's how you did it last year, you did it by big groupings, yeah.
All right.
I'll move that the board recommend Articles One through Five for starters.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion, including the golf article?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I personally am just gonna tell you my opinion on Article Three, I think it's a problem. Golf funded by free cash, so I don't, if we could hold Article Three out, I'd like to vote in favor of the other the other articles. So if you could do one, two.
Three.
Four and five. Is that okay, Eric?
I mean, we might as well just do it one at a time. I mean, this is ridiculous.
Just to hold one, I can be, sure, no, we'll do them all, and I'll, it's fine. All right, Articles One through Five, all is in favor?
Well, wait a second, you got something to discuss on Article Three, speak up.
I did, I spoke up.
Well, is that all you're gonna say?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote against it because of Article Three's in there, if we don't.
How do you propose to cover the deficit?
I don't know, we're gonna have to make cuts in the expenses, I'd say. That's not, that's for town administration to, to determine. I just don't, I personally don't think it's a loan, I don't think that we're gonna get paid back on it anytime soon. I know they're structuring it that way, but in the information that I saw, I don't foresee being able to cover that deficit in the next five to ten years. I mean, I want Pat to have the opportunity to try to turn it around, but I'm very skeptical in in the fact that that three sixty-four will be made up in the next, there's no plan on paying it back, there's, there's nothing, and.
Who said it was supposed to be a loan? I mean, I know that was discussed, but is this?
It was a loan, so.
Is this predicated on it being a loan?
We would the enterprise fund, anything that comes out from another source, we keep track of that, and it would be designed to be paid back in as fortunes change.
When has, and if the funds were there?
That's correct.
I think it goes against the enterprise, what an enterprise is supposed to do, but I guess it's on principle.
Well, I think you're right on that in terms of the strict application of the concept of an enterprise, but we do, we have borrowing by the fire department for trucks and equipment, too, out of the enterprise. I think they're a little bit more credit-worthy, however, than golf is.
They're not weather-dependent so much.
No, and it's no disrespect to golf, I just think we're putting off an inevitable situation that needs to be dealt with.
No, you're right, I mean, long-term, that's, that's pretty obvious that that has to be dealt with, but I think in terms of the other prior presentations that we had, there was some thinking that we give them a period of time to see if they could round. And I think Norm and I were discussing two or three years, right, in terms of the date, but.
And I hope they do.
But I'm not wild about it.
I hope they do, but I think, you know, we've been given direction from, from, I've been around a few years to know what the sentiment of the town was when they set up the enterprise fund, and I heard them loud and clear, and.
I don't think you were old enough.
Well, thank you, Mike, I appreciate that. But I mean, obviously, it's up to town meeting to decide, I'm just, I have to go with my gut, I just, I think we need to deal with the issue at hand. And again, if it was a loan, I haven't been given any evidence to see that that loan's gonna be paid back anytime soon. But that's the only issue I have with Article Three.
I move to recommend Article One. I'm just gonna go right down.
I'll second that.
All is in, any discussion, all is in favor?
We got golf money in there.
I know.
Sixty-one thousand.
Free cash, yep.
How do you feel about that one?
I'm not happy about it.
So vote against it. Aye.
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 Is that a four to one?
Recommend for one.
What, on snow and ice and operating law?
It's golf operating.
Sixty-one thousand in there for golf, too. It's been spent.
I know.
So what was that, four, one?
Yep. Article Two, is there a motion on Article Two?
I move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Golf enterprise, is there a motion to recommend Article Three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Is it two nays, three nays?
I think that's three nays.
What was two, was that five oh or four?
Two was five oh. Article Three failed to get the recommendation. Two to three.
What was that?
It was three to two.
No.
Two to three.
Two to three.
Two, four, three against.
Two, four, three against, which means not recommend.
Oh.
Okay, well, I see what I'm gonna do with pickleball, then.
Oh, is this a tip-for-tat thing?
Well, shouldn't it be?
No, not really.
You know.
I think things stand on their own credibility.
Quarter of a million dollars for pickleball courts, and yet you won't think about recommending three hundred and sixty thousand for golf for, for eight hundred members? You know.
We get our direction from town meeting, I'm not speaking about my personal feeling, I'm speaking about what town meeting has instructed us in the past and why it's an enterprise fund.
And you have no faith that the money will be paid back?
I didn't see a plan that, or a term or anything.
We lend the fire department money all the time.
Yeah, and there was a term, they.
With their word, there's no plan.
Okay, you're entitled to your opinion, that's. Article Four. Water, is there a motion to approve the water budget?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, five oh? Okay, septic enterprise budget, is there a motion to approve Article Five?
I move Article Five.
Second.
Discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Article Six is the school, the school budget, so the the budget number there, so just explain this number to me, Ed. This is thirty-four thousand, I'm sorry, I wish it was thirty-four thousand. Thirty-four million, two forty, one twelve consists of what?
That is the entire amount that the school committee passed in its assessment to the town of Yarmouth.
Okay, so this isn't broken up with what we've budgeted and funded and the override, so it's not split, it's just one number?
That's correct, and then if we don't have enough money to cover it within our appropriation, then it would go to an override.
So can you give me the total dollar amount that we, that we, we want, that we have funded, I should say, that includes the student shift?
Yes.
Should we be taking basically eight hundred thousand off of that number, wouldn't we?
We, if they've certified that, we can vote, we can, we can, you know, do less, or we could, you know, offer a number, but, you know, then it, then it's an issue of, if they've certified it and they don't back off their number, then it becomes a tent-meeting situation.
Well, what we've done in the past was approved a number by this board, and also approved that anything over that goes to a two-and-a-half percent override.
That's correct.
Okay, can you give me the number that we've approved?
Sure, so if, if you choose to fund the Proposition Two and a Half plus the shift.
Right.
The total number would be thirty-three million, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy, or seven hundred and fifty-six, sorry, thirty-one million.
Thirty what, no, that's not right.
Hold on.
Thirty-three million.
Thirty-two million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven.
Thirty-two million what?
Nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven.
That's, that's a million difference, more than a million.
It should be about.
So does that, does their number include debt service? Does our number include debt service?
It includes debt service, so what they have to do is they have to, as it was indicated, it's not just a reduction to our budget. So if we reduce our budget by eight hundred thousand dollars, they also have to reduce Dennis's budget. Not just reducing what, what Yarmouth's allocation is, given the current regional formula.
So I just want to be clear that the, that the number you gave, thirty-two million, nine ninety-three, one fifty-seven, is last year's FY eighteen, thirty-one, eight eighty-two, seven eighty-nine, plus two-and-a-half percent, plus the thirty-nine student shift?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, and under this scenario, as an example, Dennis's Proposition Two and a Half is four hundred thousand dollars, that would be reduced by three hundred and ninety-one thousand. So that's part of the other aspect of this. They, you know, they can't just vote to, to reduce our side, they have to vote to reduce the budget enough so that we are still in proportion of what we have to spend, unless there's an agreement with Dennis to the contrary.
So if we approve this number and we recommend this number to the voters, we can say anything over that needs to go to, and then whatever happens, happens?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion on Article Six?
I guess, is the number thirty-two million, nine ninety-three?
Nine ninety-three, one fifty-seven.
Seven, okay, so we'd substitute that for the.
Thirty, it would say that, well, it would actually just say that we approve that, and, you know, any difference would be two-and-a-half percent, two-and-a-half, Proposition Two-and-a-half percent override.
And the language we have is what we use as a mechanism to do the override. So this says that we will fund it from available funds, including doing a Proposition Two and a Half override. So this, the way the language is written is the same language that we had last year. We didn't spike out how much would be on an override until we actually put together the ballot.
All right, so, so will we explain at town meeting what the override is?
Right, and, and I think, as you, as you've described today, there might be some ability to reduce, I think the number was about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars or something along those lines, because they're kind of double-counting staff, so I believe there's some, you know, potential room to, to lower their, their allocation. But this is what they've given to us as, as an assessment.
But we'll only get two-thirds of that amount that's lowered because of what you just said.
That's correct.
We can't count on that reduction dollar for dollar.
That's correct.
So, so the certified number stays the same in the warrant article, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
And then, but, but we'll make a separate motion to approve a certain amount, or perhaps, and, okay.
Probably, yes, we can inform the folks at the town meeting that, you know, this would be subject to a certain amount for an override. And I think we, until that morning, we're looking at, you know, trying to change that number, so.
And we don't need to vote on that particular difference now, we could vote from the floor.
You could, and, but we, we have some, a timeframe where we have to actually get the ballot printed.
We did that last year.
Still have to modify it, no matter what.
Okay, is there any motion on?
Article Six.
Okay, any discussion on that, or just because we're, we're voting to recommend Article Six, Norm? Recommend or not recommend? So that's where we have to put in, we move it to place it at the thirty-four, but. So that's where we have to put in, we move it to place it at the thirty-four, but, you know, recommend at, at whatever number you...
I'd say, you would say that you do not recommend article six, but you would recommend it at whatever the, right? Whatever civil level.
So this thirty-two, nine ninety-three represents two and a half percent over last year's assessment plus the student shift. That's all.
I wanna be clear also. There's a caveat. What I did was I took a reduction in the DUI budget in proportion to the spending per school. So this is an, this is just an estimate. So until we get something from Ken Jenks where they go through and say, well, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna reduce this amount from this school and this amount from that school, we won't have an exact number. So I'm presupposing that they're gonna reduce their budget by, you know, over a million dollars in order to get to the number that we're indicating. And that's gonna come from certain schools and, and the administration. And what I did was just take a ratio of what they're spending per school and for the administration and just collapse that by the amount to get to the number that we're talking about for the student shift. So I, that's not an exact number at this point in time. We don't have an exact number.
But it's a good guesstimate.
It's a guesstimate.
Yep.
And, uh, what you did last year is you voted from the floor for the...
So can we just say we don't recommend this article and then propose an amendment at the time of town meeting?
No, because it's gonna get printed that we don't recommend it. I think we should vote to recommend it from the floor.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't have to do anything with that then? We'll just leave it?
Is that a motion?
Well, no, I'm...
I don't think we need a motion.
We don't need a motion, too.
I recall last year, we had a meeting that morning to get the final numbers set. And then we presented that to town meeting, was what they said.
Yes, we did.
All right.
Right.
So that's what will be printed in the warrant, or the...
They'll be say recommended from the floor, right?
Yes.
Right.
Well, I'm in agreement on that, I think.
Okay. Article seven, the Cape Tech article. Is there a motion?
I move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five oh. Routine capital, article eight.
Move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I, I guess one of the things that has come up and, and, you know, I'll mention it here. I don't know, um, whether we can include it or not and, and how to put a number to it. But, you know, security for our schools is, is, um, very important. We don't have metal detectors in any of our schools. I'm not sure what the, uh, how really secure the, the security systems are. And, um, you know, the school system or the, uh, the district certainly wasn't in any position, um, four or five months ago to recommend any capital spending for security systems. They, they just didn't include it in any of their requests. If we, if the, uh, district decided to recommend capital for security systems, the only way we could get that, if we don't approve it here, would be to either have a special town meeting and wait for that approval process. And I, my personal preference wouldn't, wouldn't be not to have, have to wait that long. The only way to accomplish that is, is to put it within our capital budget.
Well, the other thing that we could do is we're transferring money from free cash to a capital stabilization. We've reduced that number, um, to cover the school budget. Transfer stabilization, is that fifty thousand, Ed? That we're, how much is our capital stabilization fund now? And how much are we transferring in this year?
It's a little over three million dollars and we're gonna transfer in fifty thousand dollars from free cash and a hundred thousand dollars from the payback of one of the fire department apparatuses to free cash. And just as another point, um, the schools also have E and D, their version of free, free cash. So, um, and I think that's over a million dollars. So that's another source. I think there was some discussion about whether they should add E and D in to fund their budget, just like we don't use, um, free cash for reoccurring expenses. I wouldn't recommend that the school use E and D for reoccurring expenses, but they could use it for capital.
Could they use it if it wasn't appropriated, though? As part of their budget?
They don't do really a line item budget. It's just a big, it's a big number.
But I think they need to, to get it in their budget.
Yeah. I mean, that, but that's something we could, we can talk to the schools about. It's not, it, it wouldn't be in their assessment to us, and that's what they've worked out.
Right. They'd have to get it in the budget and allocate, uh, the, uh, the E and D...
Right.
To cover that.
Sure. And that would be a one-time, um, use of, uh, you know, one-time funding source, E and D.
I think it would've been great for either the school or the police department to put together a presentation for us.
It would. You know, I had some discussion, uh, just by email, um, with the police, uh, department, uh, this afternoon and they had a list of potential recommendations, but, um, you know, those have not been fleshed out in discussions with the district, so...
Yeah. Typically, I mean, having gone through this before with a school system, uh, you know, if you're gonna do anything to the physical plant, you're gonna need to get estimates. You know, you don't even know. I mean, there's hardened vestibules you can get, all sorts of different things. So the police's initial response was to try to ensure they've got a hundred eighty days worth of coverage at the schools they've got SROs at. Going beyond that, any, any dollar value you'd put against it would be just a, a guess because there hasn't been any comprehensive evaluation to look at what the capital cost would needed to be to install those measures and what those measures might look like. So, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to get done before you can say this school's strategy is what we're comfortable with. And, uh, there's a national debate on it. The governor has recommendations on it. I haven't seen anything from our schools on it. Some of it includes tempered glass doors, cutting down the number amount of glass in the front entrance ways. You know, it, it is a daunting task, no question about it. But, um, I think in the coming days, if we, if we wanted to do something, we could go back to school administration, see what they have planned, and if we had to make an adjustment, uh, at town meeting to maybe allow some money to be allocated that way off the free cash stabilization, it'd be your prerogative to do so.
Well, I, I think we should encourage them, uh, to move ahead quickly.
Yeah.
And see if they can get numbers together fast enough to...
It usually starts with hiring a design firm to come up with some of these hardened...
Yeah.
Solutions, if you will. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So was there a motion on the routine capital? I think there was a motion.
Any?
Yes. We are on article number eight. Any other discussion on that? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Next article is article nine, water capital.
Motion to approve. I recommend.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Collective bargaining agreements, that is left blank, so we'll, we probably should recommend that one from the floor. Is the board okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Free cash utilization, article number eleven. I think we've talked about this a couple of times. All ready? Is there a motion on article eleven?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Article twelve. Article twelve is the capital stabilization fund.
This doesn't have an amendment.
No. I think Ed structured it in a way that whatever kind of, if things were moved, whatever was left would go into that because we were, um, we had reduced the number...
Recommend from the floor on that one.
Do you have a number for that yet, or is that number based on the passage?
If everything else passes, including golf and the other items, you would have a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two, seven hundred and twelve dollars for capital stabilization. Plus, um, one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, I believe, from the money that we did not spend out of, um, the one point five million dollars of, uh...
Oh, last year? For capital?
Uh, this year. So you, you didn't spend the one, the full one point five million out of the routine capital.
So one seventy-two...
I have to check on the...
Okay. So, um, are, are you planning on printing that dollar amount in the warrant?
I, I think we were, you know...
Think we were waiting for flexibility on options if we needed the money.
And I think you're, you know, did you wanna include the DPW at one point four million in the free cash? Or was that gonna be something that you would borrow? So, you know, we're, we're still in a little bit, we're, we're looking for your direction in terms of where we would go with that.
All right. So we can, we can recommend that from the floor.
Sure.
The board wants you to get the final, final number once everything flushes out. Is that okay? We'll recommend that from the floor. Okay. Stabilization fund addition, article number thirteen. And that is to raise appropriate transfer of available funds for a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the stabilization fund. Is there any recommendation on that? Motion? Healer?
I'll, I'll recommend thirteen.
Is there a second to that?
Second. I, I, you know, I'm not sure. How does this, from available funds, right? From available funds for twelve? Why, why, how is that different from twelve?
Well, it's not the capital stabilization. There's two stabilizations, right?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And now I, now I see it. Okay.
Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimously, tourism preservation fund. The article here, um, to raise an appropriate three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars to tourism preservation fund by chapter three thirty-eight, acts of twenty sixteen. Is there a motion?
I move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why wouldn't we be using that to fund golf?
Uh, that is a, uh, discussion we've had for the future. We just actually, uh, received some money for the boardwalks. But I think going forward in the future, that is definitely a conversation we've had.
But we, we can't, we do not have the, by, by home rule petition law, chapter three thirty-eight, we have to put it in there and then it has to get dispersed in, in a, in a different, by the Community and Economic Development Committee.
That's correct.
Or the Tourism Preservation Fund Committee. So it could potentially come out of that, but it needs to be deposited into that in the committee. It's like the CPA. The money has to go into that account and then...
Aye.
Okay. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Number fifteen, article fifteen. Is there a motion?
Did you wanna withdraw that?
It's up to the board.
What's that?
Does the board want to put the full number of the article fifteen forward?
No. I think our approach has been to, by approving the free cash or recommending the free cash article, the money for the design and engineering is there. Um, I, I agree with what Eric said earlier, that it's important to get the design and engineering done and have a more firm number and then proceed. So I, I would prefer if we were withdrawing article fifteen, that would be...
Then a motion?
That, so moved. I, I moved to withdraw fifteen.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, why would we even have the article in?
We're just withdrawing the article.
Oh.
The motions to withdraw that.
Yeah. We didn't know at the time, you know, we were going down this road.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Should be the motion withdrawn.
Correct. And it's been seconded.
I made the motion.
Yes.
Then you made the motion to withdraw...
Yes, to withdraw this article.
Then anyone...
Eric seconded it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to withdraw passes five oh. Okay. Article sixteen is related to the, uh, master general law to, uh, adopt a fund to defray the real estate taxes for low-income elderly.
We approve sixteen.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's five oh. Article seventeen has been withdrawn. Article eighteen, um, general allocation. So this is the housekeeping article that just talks about the CPA funds and...
Move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article nineteen, affordable housing trust.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Article twenty is, um, housing.
I'll move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion on article twenty? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously, article twenty-one is CPA historic preservation. Is there a motion?
I move, uh, we recommend twenty-one.
Any sec, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Article twenty-two, CPA open space acquisition, um...
Recommend from floor.
Recommend from the floor. We don't need a motion on that. We'll recommend that one from the floor. Article twenty-three, CPA recreation sandy pond.
Motion to recommend article twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article twenty-four is another acquisition. I, um, it says articles withdrawn. Yep. Okay. So we don't need to do anything with that. We are just moving right along, y'all. Article twenty-five, amendment to chapter one thirteen, marijuana consumption. So, let me just look at which one this is. Article twenty-five. So, this, article twenty-five is to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaw, chapter one thirteen, general bylaw to delete chapter one thirteen marijuana in its entirety and replace it with new chapter one thirteen marijuana, which would prohibit public consumption of marijuana in the town of Yarmouth as pursuant to master general law ninety-four G or to take action thereof.
I move that we recommend article twenty-five.
Wait a minute. I just wanna make sure we're doing this correctly. So this allows for the consumption of marijuana, correct? for the consumption of marijuana, correct?
No.
This prohibits.
Prohibits public consumption.
Okay. That would prohibit?
You just read it.
Just making sure. I don't want to get confused. Don't vote wrong.
Oh, smoking in public places, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, perfect. This is the prohibition.
There's already, that chapter 113 already exists and it prohibits public consumption of marijuana in the town of Yarmouth already. This is just adding the reference to chapter 94G related to the passing of the recreational marijuana.
Okay.
So you moved?
There's a motion?
I move to recommend 25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question unanimously. Article 26 is the general bylaw relating to the marijuana ban of establishments.
Move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, article 27.
So many articles, isn't it?
So, so this one here that was given to us tonight is an amendment to article 28, but 27.
If 26 fails, 27 allows for regulations.
Right.
Correct. There was a, last meeting, Jay Tellerman, Town Council came, and Eric had asked a question with regard to whether we could reduce the number below the 20% of the liquor licenses, and Jay had indicated that you couldn't, but the reality is because we voted no on the ballot item that we can regulate it. And I guess you need to be, the board needs to be specific as to what you want to regulate. And the language that you're seeing here is identifying, do you want to regulate the number of cultivators? Do you want to regulate the number of retailers? Do you want to regulate the number of product testing and manufacturing? And then do you want to prohibit all other uses not specified as cultivators, retailers, production or manufacturing? Because we don't know what the cannabis control regulations might get added on to later and what will be defined as recreational, or retail, rather. So what you're showing there is it's limiting each one of those to one. It can be any number that you want. You could allow one retail and prohibit everything else. It's up to the board as to what you would like to recommend.
So this is, the first one we're going to take, though, is article 27, which is the general bylaw to regulate. And the planning board did not take a position on that, but the planning board made a, took a vote in a position on article 28?
The article 27, I guess the numbers got changed. This says 28. This is the general bylaw, this is the Board of Selectmen bylaw, to license it. So if the ban on all marijuana establishments doesn't pass, then you guys want to be able to regulate it similar to liquor licenses. So this is your article.
But did the planning board, I know, I was asking about article 28. Did, did the planning board take a position on article 28?
The planning board recommended all of their zoning laws.
So wouldn't we defer action on 27 until we find, find out what happens on the other, the other two?
I think you guys.
Because if those pass, there's no need to consider this, right?
This would be withdrawn, correct.
I think it gives the wrong message if we recommend it. I think, I think we're, we would recommend it only if.
The others fail.
Yeah, but we can't write that. So someone, I don't want someone.
Oh, what do we recommend from the floor?
Yeah.
I guess I need some direction on how you want the article to be written, because right now, the way it's written with the 20% is you're just limiting the marijuana retail licenses to 20% of the liquor licenses.
But is this, is this change something that the planning board has voted to recommend? Article 28.
The planning board has not voted to recommend this because it's a Board of Selectmen article.
This is article 28.
It should be 27.
It was, the numbers changed since, since then.
That's why I'm confused.
That's the confusion.
I'm confused about Jay's memo on that. And again, I only looked at it very, very quickly, but I, I thought he was saying you cannot recommend below 20% of retail package stores.
He thought that was true. I didn't think it was true. I inquired later, and Kate Federoff from his, his office confirmed that because we voted no on the ballot, we have the right to regulate and limit the number of all of the different types of marijuana establishments, or ban them all, which is what we're doing.
Even lower than 20% of the retail package stores, because how many package stores do we have?
There's nine, so it would be two.
Yeah, so you can go even lower than two.
You can, but the way it's written right now, the original article that you saw last week, just says the number of retail licenses. So by saying just retail, that would put a limit of one on retail, or the 20% on retailers, but no limit on any other type. So you could have five cultivators in town, you could have five testing. Maybe that's what the board wants.
But you could have no, no cultivators and allow testing. You, you have the flexibility.
You guys have to decide what you would like. If you're licensing, you can regulate it even further through this general, general bylaw.
Okay. Well, I think one thing we can get out of the way is both article 27 and 28, we can recommend from the floor, if that's okay with the board.
I'm good with that.
But I think in terms of her preparing this for the warrant, I think, reading the amendments in, in red here, to see, the number of marijuana cultivator license issued to the town of Yarmouth shall be limited to one. The number of marijuana retail license issued to the town of Yarmouth shall be limited to one, and the number of marijuana product testing facilities. So, but, but we could say none to some and more to others, or.
And, and basically, there's also a prohibit, a prohibited marijuana establishment. So any other type of licensed marijuana establish, not expressly defined above, is prohibited.
Okay.
So if you don't want to include one of those, we'd put it in the prohibited.
If, if, you still need to get it in some on 20%, is what you're saying?
You guys can keep it as the way it was originally written, which was 20% of the liquor licenses for marijuana retail.
The lowest number we could go is one, right?
The lowest number you could go is banning it all, but if that doesn't pass and you want to license it, this would be the next thing of how you would regulate it.
But to Norm's point, with regulating, you couldn't go lower than one, assuming the other articles fail.
Correct.
Right.
Would be the minimum.
So why don't we simply, I mean, since 20% is two.
Two of existing, I mean, that number could increase in the future.
Correct.
The 20% isn't relevant anymore.
Nope.
Because we are able to have one. So do you want 20%, which would allow two, or would you like to cap it at one?
I just do, yeah, what I was getting at with that, it was just why not say one?
Well, that's what the red, do you have this?
I just gave it to him.
Okay.
I saw it somewhere.
No, he, I just.
It's cultivator, number of product testing, and.
You could simply say, limit the number of marijuana establishments to one, and then it could be one of anything. It could be one cultivator, one retailer, one testing facility, one manufacturer, or one other.
We have to have one of something?
That's, yes, because the whole point is you want to regulate it because the ban didn't, didn't pass. If we had none, the ban would have passed.
So limit it to one.
Okay, so we're gonna, this is okay, the way that she's worded it here with everybody? Okay, so we'll recommend that from the floor.
It's one of each, is the way it's written right now.
But, I mean, let's take the, I mean, in my mind, the manufacturer is probably the least egregious. We might as well collect taxes from somebody that's manufacturing it, you know, and that doesn't allow the sale in town necessarily. If we have to allow one of something, let's allow the manufacturer and ban everything else.
Can you do that?
Well, the thing is, is you can't, the problem is, so, it could be amended, amended to say zero, but you can't make it, you can't put it on there at zero, and if it fails, take the chance of this failing, because you can't make it more restrictive from the floor.
You could, yeah.
So if the, if town, if town meeting doesn't want whole, you know, a full ban.
Right.
You think that they'll be acceptable of just one? You think that that meets the spirit of what their will would be? I don't know. I understand what you're saying, but I think if we leave it this way, somebody could potentially reduce it from the floor, because you can do that. But if we do this.
You can't reduce.
Can't reduce it to be more restrictive. I don't know. It's. But we can recommend from the floor, but I think if anybody has any direction for Kathy.
Well, I think that's what she's asking, is what the word, what the word, what wording do we want printed in the warrant, in the event that 26 fails?
I think what she's presented, I'm comfortable with, in the red tonight.
Yeah.
This came from Town Council when I asked the question, so.
I'll support that.
That's fine.
So we'll leave it the way it is and recommend it from the floor.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. So article 29 is yet another marijuana establishment bylaw. How did I miss that?
28.
Oh.
Zoning 28.
Well, on here, it says 28, 29, 27, 28, 29. So there's five.
Yeah, so 28 addresses where they could be located, updates the table.
Okay. We'll recommend all those from the floor, only if the other ones don't pass. So zoning, article 30 is zoning related to the 404 motel bylaw.
I recommend articles 30 and 31, both zoning.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both of those are 5-0. Land disposition, article 32. That's been withdrawn, so we don't need anything on that. Wastewater Continue Planning, article 208. So, so article 33 is for, let me get there. A sum of. So this basically appropriates from free cash, 200,000 for wastewater planning and
It continues the process now that we've got officially plans on both ends of the town to go down that road, including public engagement, engineering studies that we might need, recharge evaluation, recharge site evaluations.
A move that we recommend 33.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Another opposed. Article 34. Article 34 relates to the Home Rule Petition to Establish a Wastewater District.
This was the conversation from the other night. I've asked Dave Young, he's here in the audience today, if we have any follow-up questions related to that.
I don't think there's any questions. I mean, I never intended to object to it, but I also didn't intend to be put on the spot and be forced into voting for some, so somebody could have a PR moment. You know, I, I think that we should have, we should be allowed to have the same thoughtful debate here in our meeting room, in our open meeting, for our residents to see. So, you know, that was the reason I suggested to take the vote here tonight. I never intended to object to it. You know, I've expressed my concerns with partnerships in the past, so those are on record, but I think that this doesn't really bind us to do anything, because ultimately, the decision will fall on this board to recommend town meeting, and then for town meeting to vote on. But, you know, the fact that it's going to save 100 million dollars is lost on me, so I'm happy to recommend this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I guess I'm still up in the air as to what's the process. If we authorize this legislation, then we fill the board positions.
Well, that would all be subject to further negotiations. So all this really does is allows us to continue meeting with our, the partners, to discuss what that future would look like, whatever that plan ends up being, all that detail. How many, if there's commissioners, what are you going to call them? How many there's going to be? How's it going to be represented? What's, you know, the apportionment? I mean, some of this, the reason we, when we went through this back, I think it was in February, we'd given you four different options to consider, but this was the one that there's, I think we narrowed it down to the joint powers agreement, which is like Cape Lake Compact versus this one, and this one has better language to be more flexible. It allows the legislation to be enacted to develop a future entity that would have to be voted by each town's town meeting. That's the way we would structure. What that looks like, that agreement, much like the school agreement, we don't know yet because it hasn't been developed yet. So all of that would be subject to a future dialogue between the members to be presented to a future town meeting.
And even if you, even if this passed a town meeting, you, you wouldn't be obliged to even get out of the organizational phase of this if you didn't like the structure of, it was going to work.
That's correct. If you didn't like it, nothing says you got to do it. That's right. It really is.
And like, you would assume if you're working with a subcommittee, you bring it back to the full board.
That's correct.
Then they would refine it, and then it would go to town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, to, to give you some background, when we, when we met with the MNF team, it took them 80 meetings to get to that point, where it got over the finish line. So I, I am under no estimation that this is going to be an easy lift, you know?
Yeah.
I've seen enough already, so, but.
I think we should get paid by the meeting.
I'm not sure if it's going to be 80 meetings, but there would be a lot of going back and forth between boards. You know, here's what we're working on, what do you think? Getting, trying to get consensus, going back to the group. It's going to be that level of involvement.
Okay, let's roll back for a minute, because Dennis has done a lot of work at this point.
Yeah.
To develop what they believe are sources of funding.
They have.
We haven't done that.
Correct.
We'll be in front of you in September with that. We're, we're a little bit behind, as I mentioned the other night. Part of our challenge is, is that we, you know, we have to get our, our subgroup that you charged together, that, that'll come around in April, and start working with them to talk about what is it we should put in front of the board for funding options. So, you know, we're roughly, probably eight to nine months behind Dennis's effort on that.
All right.
Yeah. Which is like two years behind Harwich.
Yeah, but their work, we can learn from. I mean, we can use some of the, some of the recommendations of their cost containment studies and some of that analysis. So a lot of that information is available to us.
And that's the good benefit of being last, is, you know, it's not like we're going to be able to come up with any new, significantly different or new strategy than they, than they haven't already tried and, or have presented. So we're taking in that information, going to work it through our group, to eventually get it here to the board. And concurrently to that, it should be noted that our wastewater, if you were to say do-it-alone strategy, is still viable. If there was a significant federal government involvement with capital, like shovel-ready, we've heard that term before, I mean, we could, you know, go down that road if we wanted. So there's a lot of things, you know, I hate to say that, I say this a lot, but there's more that I don't know today than I, than I do know. But that's still available to us for sure, you know, so. But this is just a starting point for the dialogue.
Yeah, I think, Norm, one of the things I'd like to be able to do is, at our subcommittee meetings, we do have from time to time, other selectmen sit in and join us. And I think that's something that we should explore here, so that, you know, we, we need to, I think, a better job of keeping the board members informed of some of the, our deliberations, our discussions, and also some of the agendas, circulate them, so that you know what's going on, and if there's an interest in having board members participate. The door is wide open. We just need to get, I think we need to do a better job in communicating for the full board on some of the things that are going on there.
Okay.
So I'm certainly committed to doing that.
Have they talked at all market those meetings about the organizational scheme of the Norton-Foxborough-Mansfield Agreement?
Yeah, we actually had officials from those towns actually come to one of our subcommittee meetings and sort of get into the weeds a little bit in terms of how they work. And that's when we obviously talked about how long, among those towns, they had similar caution in terms of their negotiations, which is why this evolved over several years. Now, the original structure was that one town had made the investment in the facilities, and the other towns wanted to be able to opt in, which created sort of a leverage position, all right, a leverage point for the community that did control all the facilities.
I think that was Mansfield, that.
Yeah, exactly. And so I think that's why going in, I think it's important for us to sort of look at the pros and cons of each type of organizational structure. So it may very well be, I think from our point of view, if each of the three towns has an equal degree of control, that presents a different set of opportunities, or it creates, it's a different situation than one community controlling all the facilities and then making decisions on how to contract out, or to engage, or allow others to opt in for the actual treatment of, of water. So those are the things that we have to explore as well. So there is a lot to it. There's no question about it, and I think Norm's right to sort of raise the fact that the sooner we get to some of these areas and, and get a better sense of, of what our options are, how this works, what the schedule would be. I think, I think, I'd like to see out of this grant that we have, is it's a better, more clear timetable on the very, the key steps that would have to be undertaken in the timeframe in which they're done, so.
I think capital planning in this is going to be extremely critical in terms of them working simultaneously with us in their, in their needs, and how, however that is crafted in a way that it gives us time to, to plan for whatever funding it is. And, you know, we've seen, NOS has been successful in terms of their operation. They have multiple towns. I think anytime there's more than two, it brings more.
More efficiencies.
Well, not only more efficiencies, but.
You can spread the costs over a much larger area.
Yes. So I think, I think a three, a three is better than a two.
Yeah. Yeah, the one thing that I think came up at the meeting that we had the other day that we can't lose sight of is the fact that there's really a do-nothing approach. If the municipality doesn't do something on a regional basis, or it doesn't do something on its own, then. on its own, then the DEP is actually moving down the road of tightening up their requirements, designating nitrogen-sensitive areas, and so it may very well be that the cost of any kind of compliance will be largely borne by businesses and homeowners.
Well, you know, I've been listening to that for a long time, and I think we need to work at our own pace, and I think we are working. I think they need to take that into consideration, but, you know, that fear is always over our head, and yes, while I believe that it's much better and more efficient for us to do it on our own terms, I think that we are working towards that, and they've seen that. And so, I'm not sure that there's something looming that, that they want us to be in fear of, and, you know, we keep hearing that, I've been hearing it for years, and...
Well, the difference right now is that they actually have identified the watersheds that could be designated as nitrogen-sensitive areas. Those have actually been designated. They're, they're there. It's been done through the 208 Regional Poli, that whole 208 process, so...
We've been making steps moving forward.
Right, but I'm just saying that the, the way that planning has undergone is the regulatory underpinnings and foundation for the state to take that action is, is increasingly becoming evident. It's there, it's falling into place.
Well, we're getting off topic to the particular article, but...
I think, I think in terms of the article, the two competing considerations are local control versus a regional approach that could save money for all of the towns and approach the nitrogen problem on a watershed-type basis.
Which is smart.
That, what that...
And I think by entering this agreement, it gives you the opportunity to explore those possibilities without necessarily committing you to a particular course of action.
I would agree with that, but let me just make one final point. The watershed approach, you're completely right on. If we want to clean up Bass River, that's, the nitrogen's levels that have to be reduced in Bass River and in Lewis Bay are nitrogen levels that have been caused by runoff and septic waste from two towns. Bass River, it's both Dennis and Yarmouth that are contributing to that problem, and in Lewis Bay.
And the last time we brought this before town meeting, it was $275 million, and I can't tell you how many times I heard people say, "We're both pissing into the same river, and they're not doing anything about it," so...
Well, that's why going forward, I think we need to have both Dennis, and particularly Barnstable, heavily involved, as partners in this. We can't go it alone.
Agreed. And this is exactly what I think people were looking for when we had the failed, I don't think anybody was saying before that we didn't need to work to address it. They said we need to do it smarter, more efficiently, and I think that exploring this...
I think this is the approach.
Yeah.
And it was affordability. People were terrified about the, the price tag.
Correct. So, I think these are the kind of things that we need to continue to explore.
There's enormous complexity ahead of us in terms of the agreement and the allocation of costs. And if we think that the district-school agreement is easy, this one will exceed that in complexity, with the allocation of the capital costs having to do with the waste treatment facility as well as the operating costs. And the timing of those allocations, picture what happens. A facility is, is put out for design, whose responsibility is that? Let's say it's a five-million-dollar design bill.
Well, if we're talking about a contract for design, that would be the responsibility of the partnership, the, the district or the entity that, the three towns both, all agree, all three towns would have to agree to agree.
Yeah, all I'm saying, Mark, is, yeah, that is, that's fine. That's a five-million-dollar bonding arrangement, that the district goes out and gets a bond, and then builds the towns. And on what basis?
I understand, that's why we need to hammer out the details, the devil's in the details.
That's the complexity that this thing will have, and it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be very difficult.
So, I think you'll probably be in favor of weighted voting, Norm.
Okay, so, we had, I forgot, do we, is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Okay, is there any other discussion in the article? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passage unanimously. So, the Article thirty-five was withdrawn. Next, we have a reverse landfill recreational article.
Those are all...
Oh, yeah, okay, wait a minute. Oh, they're all withdrawn.
Yeah.
True. All right, so, stretch code, Article thirty-eight.
Motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Um...
Who's the nays in it?
Eric and I.
Put me in, it's an A too. So, it's two, three.
So, charter changes, and that, just for the record, I'm concerned about the affordable, affordable housing part of that, and what that could mean to a developer. So, I think, I think, you know, if we can get any information that can somehow be mitigated, I don't know by what, I'd be more, more in favor, more comfortable with...
I would just say that that came up in every single community, and it's not been an issue. So, that, there's no anecdotal evidence usually on these projects, the design standards are not the subpar operations that are put in front of communities, but, I mean, I've heard that when I was in that position, nobody's ever backed out, not done a project or anything. So, it came up, and it was, the point was if it looked like it was gonna kill a big deal, then you could always reverse the vote, which nobody's ever done, nobody's even tried to do it. So, in the end, it, it ends up being something that hasn't come to fruition as it...
I don't think that's gonna be a problem with affordable housing, one way or the other, but, you know, I think the issue is, if we wanna turn away from potential of hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants, then recommend against it.
Yeah, I mean, that's really what the situation comes down to. We know already there's a lot of work to be done in our physical plant, and that this money can go to offset that kinda upgrade work, which will save us money in the long run.
Okay.
I'll recommend Article thirty-nine.
Sir, second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Article forty, petition article related to Hockenham Road Ancient Way.
I vote to not recommend Articles forty, forty-one, and forty-two.
Sir, second?
I'm going to abstain on forty.
Okay.
No vote not to recommend on forty-one and forty-two.
Okay, all's in favor of not recommending?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, it carries forty, carries four...
Zero, one.
So, it's actually zero, four, one, and then zero, five, and zero, five, right? No, wait, so it's, it's to not recommend. It's five-O to not recommend. Articles forty-one, forty-two.
I wanna change my vote on the golf. What article is that?
Article six.
Yeah, notwithstanding their lack of creditworthiness, I'll give them a chance to bail out, I'll change my vote to yes on that.
Okay, so that's three, two.
Norm voted in favor of pickleball.
That was the concession.
I think the, a split vote is, is a disaster for the golf course if that happens. It'll shut it down for both courses, so...
Mike, on the Hockenham Road issue, real quick, I would defer this to Jeff Colby, but ironically enough, he was given a phone call today by, was it EPA Region One? Yeah, related to our liability associated with that, and the end result is, according to the US EPA, we don't have any. So, because it's a private, it's not a public way, and it's a private development.
I went out and walked it last weekend, and it's about a mile one way, and maybe more than that. And, you know, I could not see the signs of erosion that were being referred to. And the picture that we saw with water rushing down, it was a triangular sign. Well, in that area, King's Way has put up a, a berm to divert the water. So, if it had to do with tremendous volume unanticipated, I, you know, can understand that situation, but I think they'd already done some mitigation.
So, this is to divert water off the road? Is that what you're saying?
Divert water off the road, yeah. And there were a couple of sections, I mean, it's not a wide road. There were a couple of sections that were muddy, and you could sink in maybe six inches, but there had been some traffic through there, a number of cars, so, yeah.
So, they did recommend following it up as like a conservation-related issue, so that's conservation, yeah.
I did a little more looking into that, not, not with any great specificity, but just the general legal requirements, and if he's correct with that document, that the public has rights in that way, that doesn't, however, mean that the landowner has gotta maintain that right of way. It would give the people that are the users of that right of way the right to make some improvements if the, if the, if the owner of the way didn't, didn't make them, but they're under no affirmative obligation as far as I could see to make improvements to the road.
The other, the other assertions I heard were that the construction of the golf course and of the King's Way itself had significantly changed the, the look of the, of the drainage, so that, you know, it was, as if, you know, it was orienting everything down toward that road. I didn't see that at all. Yeah, you know, there, it's undulating land, so, you know, I, I just didn't see where the assertions that there had been substantial degradation through development, I don't, I just didn't see where that had occurred.
You know, that, it does wash out. You know, I go down there quite often, and, you know, I think King's Way throws a couple of luck.
Probably, yeah.
Shovels of old dirt in the, in the washouts. But, you know, unless I miss my mark, I think at least half of the objection is to the fact that, you know, that used to be a wide-open passable road. And when King's Way was built, cars began using it less frequently, and it's just grown in tremendously over the years, you know? I, I think when there was nothing there in the seventies and eighties, people drove down there all the time. Since King's Way has been developed, people have gone down there less frequently. You know, I think we should, or somebody should maintain it a little bit, because mosquito control does use it to maintain the marshes and the, and the green hedge boxes, as they mentioned in that letter, and, you know, I think those are important to mitigating the, or minimizing, or helping to minimize the greenhouse mosquitoes, so it needs to be, and I think it is the legal access for the Sam, Sam Crowell's house down the end there, so I don't know how much he uses it, because he does have another access further to the north, but I, I do think it needs to be at least trimmed back once in a while.
Yeah, public, Rick Kelly had made mention of the fact that over the years, they have gone on there with a minimal level of effort to do a little bit. Yeah. The point well taken. If I might, just the one housekeeping item, it's on the agenda for eight fifteen, was to just take an affirmative vote?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, so that's for the town meeting in its totality as we've discussed tonight.
Disgust, yeah.
So, is there a vote to approve an inter-town meeting warrant?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, at a, at a future meeting, we have to, sometime between now, let's look and see what's coming up.
The next meeting will be the tenth.
Right, but at one of our meetings, we need to put on there where we, we have to have a discussion on who's gonna move the articles, and I don't see that on here, so, we still have to do that. Okay.
Do that on the twenty-fourth if you want.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yep. Okay, board and committee actions, Mark.
I do not have any recommendations for this evening.
Great. Approval of the joint meeting minutes of January third.
That was the, the multiple board meeting we had with FinComs and School Committee?
Yeah.
That was January.
January.
Seems like a year ago. I'll move to approve.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, upcoming agenda review, we just discussed one item that we have to add on here. Today is, today is the twenty-seventh of March. Our next meeting, we do not have a meeting April third, April tenth?
Says no meeting.
No meeting. We're letting you off the hook. We've had a tough time with you guys in March, you deserve a break.
So...
April tenth is the next meeting.
April tenth is the, we have to get that...
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, April tenth is the next meeting, so we have a special entertainment license permitting for Vineyard Wind. Vote and sign the election warrant. So, that's the ballot, correct?
Yeah. Actually, if you, I might, you know, tired to know, if you wanna do Vineyard Wind, just push it out a little bit to a, another date. I mean, that project isn't obviously going anywhere anytime soon, but, I mean, it just, it's one of those things where there's promises to be a full house there that night, so if you wanted to move that out after town meeting, that's fine. It's an internal, it's our DNR and Conservation gives you an update of what the milestones are for the project at the federal, state, and local level.
Well, the board of selectmen goal discussion, we never do until after the election, because, so we need to move that down till, to after the election, because whoever is sitting on the board should have the opportunity to participate.
Into June, probably.
June, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely after, after the election.
Yeah.
And reorganization.
Usually, the first meeting after, which would be May twenty-second, we reorganize, and it's, yeah.
Correct. Committee assignments, reorganization, and then, and then we have, we start to put together our, our goals, so I'm not sure really if there's a need on April tenth to put that off. It doesn't look like there's really gonna be that much on there.
We need two in April, and we don't have one on the third or the seventeenth.
Right.
So, our only opportunities are the tenth and the twenty-fourth.
Yep. Those regulations, what else isn't?
One of the items that I'd like to discuss would be the, an update on the water agreement. I think there's a water agreement with Barnstable coming up sometime in May.
Yeah.
So, I think it might be helpful, before voting on anything, is maybe have a, at least a brief update and discussion about it.
That would be, yeah, to, not the Comocuit Heights issue, that's a different one, yeah.
We're talking about the, the water agreement between Yarmouth and, yeah.
They tap into our wells.
They're tapping into the Yarmouth water supply, and they're...
Hopefully, they'll reciprocate.
Hopefully, they'll be, yeah, I, I'm a believer that there has to be some reciprocal relationship, because...
They do, they pay us for it.
Yeah. But I think one of the things that I think is critically important is also more engagement on Lewis Bay and that watershed. It's, there's been crickets, literally, from Barnstable on any of this discussion, so...
There's much more than there used to be. Should've been here a few years ago, we were trying to get them to...
No, I understand, but I think, I think, I think it's, it's worth a discussion. I think we gotta go beyond crickets.
Yes.
All right?
Well, Dan's been working behind the scenes, I think, right?
We have a dialogue going. It's, you know, it's, it's slow to get information exchanged in a productive fashion, but it's a good dialogue, yeah.
But where I'm coming from follows up in the conversation that we just had ten minutes ago about wastewater. You know, Lewis Bay is not just Yarmouth's challenge. We have to reduce ninety percent of the nitrogen in Lewis Bay, and sixty-some-odd percent of the land area that contributes into Lewis Bay is from the town of Barnstable. So, at what point do we get serious? I mean, that's my concern, that's my issue, and we need to get them engaged. And I'm not overly sympathetic to renewing a water agreement unless we can at least make some progress with the town of Barnstable, you know? So, that's where I'm coming from. make some progress with the town of Barnstable, you know? So that's where I'm coming from.
All right. Anybody else have anything else?
Well, maybe the price of water just doubles each year. There's no action. Ed would like that extra revenue, right, Ed? What do we get, like half a million dollars a year or something out of it, or a quarter of a million? There's a lot of money there. So maybe it covers some of the other costs. Maybe it covers wastewater.
Well, there's a fine line between a fair price and extortion. So we've gotta be careful on that.
I'm just thinking of the Yarmouth taxpayers. We're gonna have-- we need to work together, right? Lewis Bay is not just Yarmouth's issue. It's Yarmouth and Barnstable's issue. We need to work together. And if they-- all we're getting from them is crickets. I think we need...
Check for a quarter million dollars.
I'd like another quarter million if that's all we're gonna do.
Okay.
The sound of crickets is expensive. Let's just put it that way.
Jeff, you got a hard drive bargain to make out there, so...
All right. Good points, though.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll put that on. Anybody else with agenda items, individual items? Eric?
The only thing, you know, and I don't really want to get into elaborate discussion, but I have gotten a couple of phone calls about water. There's water everywhere. I've never seen so much water. You know, I think people are being frustrated because they're being told not to pump their water into the streets, and their neighbors are pumping into their basements, into their yard, and therefore I just, you know, I guess my only advice is be patient, and things will dry out eventually, I hope. But I drove around to, you know, places in town I had either never been or never been in a long time last weekend. And there is just, like I said, water like I've never seen. So I think we all-- we're all feeling the pain. But, you know, I know that Rick Kelly and Mark Grills, they have been fielding calls, and everybody's doing their best. But I think people just need to be understanding and patient. Let Mother Nature absorb some of it. That's all I have.
No, I'm not gonna say anymore. And I had the same subject, and, you know, I'm not gonna say anymore about it at this point.
Okay. Mark, any individual items?
I think I've said enough.
Okay. Okay. We have a consent agenda.
Yes. And on the agenda is an appointment for Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Small to be reappointed as trustees of the Yarmouth Affordable Housing Trust. You were kind enough to sign that last week. We were a little punch drunk there, so we forgot to take the vote to approve that. So and then also, there is on the agenda, the Easter service at Smugglers Beach, the annual permission for that, and some donations for the senior center, and a report on the alcohol license status, and some fundraising for the marching band. There's also a letter, it's not on the consent agenda, but there is a letter Kathy Bailey brought to my attention, an interesting idea for the future. It's the very last document in there, to work with EverSource to help us identify folks that are in need of energy during a course of a power outage. So we'll follow that up. But that's not on the agenda, so...
Along those same lines, there was a family during the storm that has a medically fragile child up in Yarmouth. They just moved from Station Avenue. So previously, they were in, you know, the line of repair, so to speak. And this child, I know this family personally. They used to be neighbors of mine. This child can at a moment's notice be taken to Children's Hospital for long durations of time. She has Rett's Syndrome, very disabling genetic illness. And there was a broken telephone line and trees obstructing the road. And the mother was quite concerned because if this child, and you don't know when she's gonna need medical attention, there could have been a problem in getting her out of there. So Steve Exaros saw the mother's alert about her situation, and he got involved. And I think he got involved with DPW and got the EverSource crews down there and so forth. But I think families like that, we have to identify. And, I mean, this kid's medical needs are profound. And it could be catastrophic if she ever needed medical attention and couldn't be evacuated immediately. So I would like to see, you know, through the police and DPW and fire, identify that household as a top priority and to make sure that checks are done during storms and to make sure that road access-- because they didn't really think about this because they just recently moved. And before that, you know, like I said, they were-- they lived next to me for a while, and then they moved to Station Avenue. And they were-- that road is always gonna be cleared no matter what because it's a main traffic artery. But now they live down off Summer Street. And that road being obstructed could be a very, very dangerous situation for this child. So I'd like to see something get in place on that.
That's a good point. We've had that issue before in past snowstorms with people who have medical issues, oxygen issues, things like that. I think the fire department tries to identify them. So if there's some type of emergency management planning that everybody can get on board with, I think that those are all important things that our public safety be aware of.
So let me make sure I understand this. If you, for example, have someone in your family or in your household that may have certain conditions that might require some special attention during an emergency where the power is out, there's actually a list that you can sign where someone will come and check on you?
Well, I don't know if there's a list per se. I don't think there's a formality. But there-- I do know that the fire department has some...
You can just call the fire department.
Yeah. And let them know. I think that it's important that they know. There's-- I know there was one point in time without electricity with somebody with oxygen.
Yeah. Oxygen's a big one, yeah.
So they need to be aware of that, yes.
Yeah. We need to do a little bit of work in the offseason here. I had a couple of folks come and talk about the shelter was just too far away. They thought about going to their-- to the shelter, but the thought of trucking out in the snow, so they stayed in their house cold. And we've identified that as, you know, we're of a large enough community that we should be prepared to shelter on our own beside what the county's doing. So that's all part of a strategy going forward. All good points.
Great.
So if I could get just a consent agenda vote, that'd be great.
All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Town administrator updates?
I think we hit on a lot of those. We got a lot of work cut out for us between now and town meeting. But I want to thank you for going through all the articles. That's a big lift on our part, and we're looking forward to the finish line as much as you are as well. And I concur with Eric. If it would just stop raining for a while. I drove around and spent quite a bit of time looking at some of our callers. It's unbelievable, some of the situations. And there's no easy answer. But some of the houses had three hoses coming out of them, you know, firefighter-sized hoses and just blasting water. In one house, we told them not to put it on the road, so they put it in their yard, but it still gets to the road, you know? Just, it's an awful situation. I've called a number of folks. It's painful, no question about it. So...
Well, and unfortunately, it's not what people want to hear either. They want a resolved answer. And we really don't-- we don't have one. I mean...
I did talk to Selectman Holcomb about this. Maybe a little bit later down on the line is to get an update from Jeff as to, you know, I think some folks have the mistaken impression that our storm system, it actually drains to somewhere. In most instances, the vast majority, just it's an opening in the ground. That's where it goes.
They think it's a sewer. It goes into a sewer.
That's correct. That's right. I hear the word sewer thrown around a lot. It's not that way at all.
Basically, it's a well.
Yeah.
When the well's full. And our wells are cleared. We do the best that we can do to remove the debris and...
Problem is, some of them are covered with water.
With water.
And nothing's moving because they're, you know, yeah.
Okay. Any other updates?
No, that's...
Anything else from the board? Motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah. Everybody has to sign this.
Yeah. There's also, there's a, yeah, five-member signature for the warrant, yeah.
Yes. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.